Good evening, everybody. We're reconvening from our special closed session meeting. There's nothing to announce on from that meeting, so we'll close that meeting. And we will call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting Wednesday, October 25th at 6:20. Jason, would you read the replay statement, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, October 27th at 1:00 PM and Monday, October 30th at 6:00 AM, I believe. It's being closed captioned. It will be webcast at sacmetro cable dot TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at elkgrovecity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, provided to the deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, Jason?
For the roll call, Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Mayor Lee is absent.
So I see we have Orlando Fuentes in the audience. Would you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Is it on?
Doesn't sound like the mic doesn't sound like it's on.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmen. So, as we say, the Pledge of Allegiance, please put your hand on your heart, remove your hats, and hands out of pockets as we begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Orlando. So would you all join me in a moment of silence for whatever cause you may have, whether it's for issues here locally or something all the way around the world or something personal in your life? Next item.
Take us to Section 2, Approval of Our Agenda.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Soen, second by Hume. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension done. Next item.
We have no closed session items under Section 3, which will take us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is Proclamation declaring October 2017 as American Pharmacist Month. And if I can ask from the audience, do we have representatives from California North State University College of Pharmacy? Please come on up.
And we're going to have Councilmember Wen be the presenter tonight.
This is so fitting because I just came from taking my two-year-old to go see the doctor. She's been running a fever for the past six days, and the doctor told me she's got strep throat, my two-year-old ran. And so they're giving us some medication. And somebody who, as somebody who is Vietnamese descent, and one of the things that in my culture what we do is rely on herbs and not necessarily medication, and what I've learned is that, you know, your pharmacist is somebody that you really want to get to know, and that what they've got to say and what they give you is truly going to make you better. And so this proclamation, and I won't read all the whereas's, but it does say that October 2017 is know your medicine, know your pharmacist. Whereas the American Pharmacists Association and the California Pharmacists Association have proclaimed October as American Pharmacist Month with the theme, know your medicine, know your pharmacist. Whereas it's important to promote the profession of pharmacy as an essential healthcare provider. Congratulations. Thank you for all that you do on behalf of the City of Elk Grove.
Thank you. We thank you, all the council members, for proclaiming October as the Pharmacist Month. It's very important that we got recognized because, as you may know, a lot of people think that pharmacists just can't use. We do a lot more. We are there to optimize your medication and make sure that you get the most benefit out of your medications. So thank you all for this recognition.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item.
Take us to Item 4.2, which is the Multicultural Committee Annual Update and Presentation of Proclamation reaffirming Elk Grove as no place for hate.
Okay, can I, I'm going to ask the rest of the council to join me down here. I think it'd be appropriate. Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right. This is great. So I see a lot of folks in the audience here that attended earlier this week, but I just wanted to, for those who weren't able to make it, we kicked off a series of meetings regarding racial, talking about racial issues and what will lead to implicit bias. And so I think it's fitting this evening that we're going to be recognizing, reaffirming tonight that the City of Elk Grove is no place for hate. And I got a couple folks here, Scott Matsumoto, our chairperson, and members of the Multicultural Committee. This is my veteran councilmember, Vice Mayor, here giving me, giving me a lot of tips. So, and we look forward to having another meeting, continuing these series of meetings next, next week on Monday, the 30th. But we are declaring Elk Grove no place for hate. Whereas the City of Elk Grove Multicultural Committee was charged by the City Council to educate the community about the City of Elk Grove's cultural diversity and to advise the city on the best practices for conducting outreach to various ethnic communities and faith-based organizations in Elk Grove. And whereas the Elk Grove City Council proclaimed the City of Elk Grove as no place for hate for the first time on September 28th, 2016, whereas the City of Elk Grove wishes to ensure that everyone is welcomed within its borders and that the city will protect and preserve the rights, freedoms, safety, and security of all its residents. And as a diverse and inclusive community, the City of Elk Grove recognizes the dignity of all its residents, the contributions of both immigrants and native-born residents, and the importance of preserving and protecting this diversity. And whereas the City of Elk Grove celebrates its rich multicultural heritage without the fear of intimidation or hate-motivated violence against any of its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Elk Grove City Council hereby reaffirms its proclamation declaring the City of Elk Grove as a no place for hate, and the City Council rejects, discourages, and disapproves of any hate-based activity or conduct directed to harm a person due to a person's immutable characteristics hereby signed on the 25th of October. You know, one more thing, we're kicking off a humanity campaign led by the Multicultural Committee, No Place for Hate between you and I. So thank you both for all the work that you do and look forward to continued efforts going forward. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much for reaffirming the proclamation for no place for hate. It's something that we started, actually started about a year ago, where Mayor Davis at the time literally proclaimed here, where I'm standing now, as Elk Grove has a place, no place for hate. And going off of the proclamation, a lot of the credit should go to Dr. Ashok Shankar, a member of our committee. His work has been invaluable in helping both the committee as well as the community help understand the origins of hate and kind of where hate arises and how we can kind of tackle it moving forward. So, thank you for that. Tonight, we're also here to give our presentation on behalf of the Multicultural Committee, our annual report, to the council. And so we're going through a couple of things here. With me tonight is Dr. Bernice Boss De Martinez, she's a committee member of the Multicultural Committee, and I'm Scott Matsumoto, the Chair of the Committee. So here we go. All right, so the Multicultural Committee, it's a 10-member committee established back in 2011, and we've had a couple of, well, the City Council charged the Committee with doing a couple of things. Four in particular. The first was to research and plan an annual Elk Grove Multicultural Festival. It was to educate the community about the City of Elk Grove's cultural diversity, advise on best practices for conducting outreach to various ethnic communities and faith-based organizations in Elk Grove, and provide guidance to the City Council on issues impacting multicultural communities. And then we have the list of the Committee members on the right. All right, so as I mentioned earlier, and then what we just went through with the no place for hate, this time last year, we were here talking about the same thing. And though this time, there is more effort, effort towards putting these words into action. And though Monday was a good start, it is the hope that the conversation does continue and that we continue to bridge, bridge the gap.
I think you're wearing the same tie.
Yep. I did not notice that. Yep. Thought I'd make it.
Ouch.
Yeah. It was this or the one I wore on Monday, and well, the one I wore on Monday, we're not going to that one.
That's your lucky tie.
Yes, it is. It's actually my UC tie.
No place for hate tie.
Yep. All right, and so this year, one of the things the Committee did differently, we decided to have a cultural diversity awareness month. In the past couple of years, it's always been a week, and we've had events throughout that week in which we do different events that take place. But we discovered last year that a lot of the events that took place aren't, didn't take place during that week. So we're like, why not make it a month? And so we did. And the month of August was Cultural Diversity Awareness Month. Overall, there was over 10,000 participants that took place, that took part in each activity, well, all the activities. It included a kite-making workshop, a ceramic plate decorating session. We went to the farmer's market for multicultural day. We talked about labyrinth walk, the Utean festival. We also partnered with the library to do multicultural storytime. And it ultimately culminated with our sixth annual multicultural festival on August 26th. And so here's a couple of images from our multicultural festival. There were over 20 cultural performances, and you can see some of those there. With the festival itself, well, basically every great festival needs great volunteers. And this year, we were fortunate enough to have those great volunteers. There were over 100 volunteers that did brave the heat and come out and basically volunteered there Saturday afternoon to help with the festival. In particular, I did want to talk about some of our super volunteers, Raquel Luhano, Bernie Bueno Astro, Margaret Munson, Verna McKeel, Jackie Lewis, and then some of our former members, Orlando Fuentes, who gave the pledge today, and Yana Shober. Their efforts were instrumental in making the festival a success. And you'll be seeing a couple more things coming up about that. We also had an art show that took place at the pavilion, and there were more than 120 entries. And it, the art show was designed to kind of highlight different artwork that takes place from an array of backgrounds. And so there's a couple of images related to that. We also had displays and exhibits. There were over 121 cultural exhibits and vendor booths, like we've had at every festival and that's hanging outside the City Council chamber. We have the diversity pledge. It's a way for citizens to reaffirm their commitment to diversity and tolerance in Elk Grove. We also had Henna artists drawing, too. And so the festival results. This year, we decided to, there was a lot more, at least I felt there was a lot more done on social media that took place, and there are some of the stats related to that. There are about nearly 56,000 social media impressions, over 92,000 website impressions, 8,200 special sections, and the Elk Grove Citizen, they helped produce the programs for the festival. 78,000 eBlast account fit members, nearly 3,000 theater ads in our local theaters here. We also went out with transportation with 42 E-Trans bus posters, and there were live interviews on Univision and as well as Good Day Sacramento. It also cannot be possible without our sponsors for the festival. In total, there was $35,250 in business sponsorships, which actually I believe is the largest we've ever actually been able to raise for the festival. Big kudos goes out to Kaiser Permanente, as well as the other sponsors listed on the slide there. All right, and then this year, part of the Committee's efforts was to kind of go beyond the festival, talk about things that aren't normally, that the Committee has not historically normally done. And one of the events that we did was at our last meeting on October 17th. At the end of the meeting, we had an event to celebrate Diwali. And it was a way to celebrate the Festival of Lights and expose Elk Grove to new cultures and customs that aren't normally talked about within the city. And it was a very festive atmosphere. It was a packed house. I think even the overflow outside was, was pretty, pretty impressive. And it's the hope that the Committee works on this, works on this and other events in the future throughout the year. And so moving forward, we talked about it earlier, supporting the humanity campaign. It is a slight extension of the no place for hate part of it, but as I also mentioned earlier, it's, right now, we have to put the words into action. And the hope is that we continue moving it forward. It has been a running agenda item on our committee meetings every month, and it's something that I encourage both anybody who wants to participate to come to our meetings and talk about it. We're also hoping to extend outreach to our schools. We've had representatives come in from local entities, like we've had the police chief at our meetings, we've had representatives from the Elk Grove School District at our meetings, and it's ranged from, yeah, education, law enforcement, and economic development. We're also hoping to finalize our sister cities' application process. The city, we've talked about this in the past, and it's something we're hoping to finally get moving again on that. And then, like I mentioned earlier, we're going to be talking about cultural diversity, additional celebrations. And so if anybody has any things that they would like to see, we're open for input, and it would be a good, good thing kind of moving forward. Also want to emphasize, the last charge that the Committee was charged with earlier about providing guidance to the council, that's also something that we're hoping to do moving forward as well, a little more than what we're currently doing, since the festival seems to be moving along, getting a lot smoother every year, to where our attentions now could start shifting towards the other charges that the Committee has been charged with. There's also a vacancy on the Council, on the Committee, and it's, should be opening up for recruitment once you guys get through the consent calendar items. And so we do encourage all those who are interested, both here in the audience and watching online, to consider applying for it. And then last thing, I just want to make a quick comment on all that's kind of gone on recently in Elk Grove, but just want to emphasize something that my boss always said. It's one of my favorite quotes. I work for a celebrity member, Shirley Weber, from San Diego, and I felt that this quote was kind of meaningful, kind of after the success of Monday, and the start of that conversation and moving forward. And she talks about how, and the quote goes, basically inclusion and diversity, it's like a delicate flower. It's something that needs to be maintained and kept, but racism and hatred, it's like a weed, and it grows best in neglect. And that's something we all have to work on as a community, as a unified community in order to basically make Elk Grove the best place that we can possibly make it. And so with that, are there any questions from the council or comments?
Councilman Soen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Not a question, but just a comment of appreciation. Thank you, Scott, and for the whole Committee for all that you guys have been doing and supporting this whole effort as we continue to try to do what celebrity woman Weber was saying, nurturing and encouraging the diversity and acceptance within our community. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wen.
Yes, you know, I echo Councilmember Soen's comments, but I also want to say that the festival that you put on, when I went, I found folks from many other cities that came in to enjoy the cultural diversity of it, and it speaks volume to our city. And I know it takes a lot of work for the Committee to put that together, and so I commend you for doing such an amazing job on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Hume.
Yeah, echo those comments. I found the same experience when I was speaking to attendees at the festival, that they'd come from other communities. And great festival, did a great job. But I appreciate that the Committee is now looking at sort of expanding its purview of duties as we are trying to tackle these larger issues of race relations in Elk Grove. I think probably no other instrument of the city is better poised to handle that conversation and hold that space than you all are. So, good luck and Godspeed to you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
And I agree to everything that's been said. I'd like to add just a couple things, and one, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring the fact that our common friend, Newton Ekbo, who had the vision for the Multicultural Committee going back to about 2009, and then we're able to actually bring it forward, a full consensus of the Council in 2011, and to see what's come from that. And Newton was the very first appointed member to the Multicultural Committee. And so it brings a lot of fond memories of him and what that vision and the conversations we had for years, for this to come about and be bigger than I'm sure even he imagined it becoming. And now for you to continue to build upon it with the additional events you did this year, the Diwali last month, or I guess it was this month. And so to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Hume said, is you take on these items, not only items of how we can help with the diversity issues or the racial issues that have been going on recently, but also I kind of challenge you if you could maybe come up with something each quarter to expand upon, so and have diversity within those type of events that you have to showcase what we have here and celebrate those differences and be able to educate people. And then, obviously, the campaign you're doing, fully support, no place for hate, the humanity campaign, I know that Kristin and her team's been very, very active with, I went on social media, I was able to do the face frame for my profile picture, I was able to go online and sign my pledge online, as well as added the video online. So collectively, with our city support team and the multicultural committee, you guys have done a phenomenal job. And then the last thing, your weed versus a flower, that's great visual, and I appreciate that because I take that wholeheartedly.
Well, thank you.
So, thank you for everything that you and the team do.
All right, thank you. Bernice, Dr. Boss De Martinez has a couple of words, too.
Please.
Thank you. As the lead person on our sub-education committee that was responsible for making sure that no place for hate remains on our agendas month after month, we want to challenge not only the council, but also all of the citizens here to remember what is in this pledge. It's tough work. It is not easy. We know that you've enjoyed the festival. It is about fun, it's about food, and some will say about fancy. Yes, we worked very hard to make the festival a success, but the real hard work is now before us. And we want to make sure that no one here in Elk Grove ever feels comfortable displaying racial, ethnic, gender, bad-oriented hate. It is intolerable, and it cannot be excused.
I agree. Excellent point. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you again. And, yeah, we'll be back with other things.
Thank you. Jason, next item, please.
Take us to Section 5, our public comment.
Okay, it looks like we have Jim Kelly, followed by Andre Walker.
Vice Mayor Detrick and City Council persons, I had hoped that I would not have to be here today. I looked through the agenda to see that yet one more City Council meeting has gone by where you don't want to discuss the by-district concept. So I'm going to ask you one more time, and I'll be back in two or three weeks and do it again, to put the matter of the by-district initiative on the city ballot for November of 2018. I'm also here to update, and I, so I am asking each of you to do that, and if you would talk about it before I leave, I would appreciate it. I'm also here to update you and the city on how our effort is going. It's been two weeks since we met the requirement to be able to pass petitions. There are 10 volunteers out there who are collecting signatures. The math is that if we have 100 of them each collecting 100 signatures, we have the 10,000 signatures that we need to force the issue on the ballot over your folks unwillingness to do so. I did a little road test since the last council meeting. I spent about six to eight hours. I walked within three blocks of my house. I probably hit between 120 and 130 houses, 85 of which answered the door. That netted me 110 signatures. I did have five people who said no, so out of 110, I had five that said no. Again, I said it took about six to eight hours. One thing that stood out for me was that I didn't have to walk very far, and I didn't have to do a lot of salesmanship. I had a couple of houses where I got some, I'm not really sure I want to do that. And when I said, well, okay, let me add a little more to the pot, I said, there are four ways we could get to this by-district concept, and one of them is your City Council could put it on the ballot. And they've refused to do so. Two of them have told me in so many words that the city doesn't need this, and maybe the citizens don't really know what they want, but we don't want it. I had two of them grab my petition out of my hand to sign it. I had another person who was adamantly opposed to by-district, thought that was very interesting. We talked about it a little bit, and when I told him about your folks' position, he said, you know what, I'm still opposed to it, and I will get you 100 signatures because that's just not acceptable. We should be able to make this decision ourself. So with having said that, I am here to tell you that we're still asking you to put it on the ballot. You have that ability. If I understand correctly, you need to approve it amongst yourselves to even put it on the agenda, and then you can discuss it amongst yourself at a following board meeting. So that's, that's my pitch. If there's anybody here who would like to sign the petition, I will be out in the hallway. And if there's anybody who wants to pass petitions, I would appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Andre Walker, followed by Vanessa Attilis.
I want to say I also support by-district voting. So, thank you, Mr. Kelly. I wanted to thank the council for hosting the event on Monday, or, you know, putting it together. And I'm looking forward to the next couple meetings. I know the room was packed initially, but I want to see more people invited and more people engaged. I feel like the people that showed up were primarily already invested in the issues. And the, I worry about the visibility of the events, considering they're advertised mostly on social media. I think one woman said that she heard about it that day and was like, oh my gosh, I have to be there. And that's kind of last minute, you know? I am wearing my new pin. It's on my purse, which I left over there, and it's like a shoulder purse, it's right here. But I- I do find it unfortunate that it says, "Between you and I, there is a man." And I know it's between you and I, there's no room for hate, but it looks like "man" is just right there. And I would like to know what you took away from the first meeting. If you could take a moment during council comment and share with us, I'd really appreciate that. I figure I could go first. I learned a lot about the quantity and nature of the incidents here in Elk Grove, and I was expecting to hear about the microaggressions and the verbal disrespect. I wasn't expecting all the incidents of violence that were brought up. And that was heartbreaking. And so, just the quantity of the microaggression and the verbal disrespect. I mean, I thought about the impact on quality of life that those kinds of things had. I mean, they're called microaggressions, but they don't feel trivial. Like, it can ruin your whole day when somebody says something really rude to you, right? And if this happens over and over and over, I mean, it's got to be hard living here in Elk Grove sometimes. So I'm glad we have this campaign going. And like I said, I'm looking forward to future meetings. Please share your thoughts on Monday nights. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, Danessa. Hello again. Followed by Mike Barnbaum.
Hello, council members. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for getting my name correct. I appreciate that. I also wanted to share my thoughts about Monday's meeting. I thought it was exceptional. I really appreciated and admired how you guys let everybody speak. The fact that there was standing room only, and the fact that the speaking went on for three and a half hours speaks volumes about what is happening in our community and the need for such a meeting to exist. And it also speaks about how that's not the only meeting of that type that needs to exist. So I'm very encouraged about the next couple of meetings with the implicit bias information. But I'm also hoping that we will schedule more of these opportunities for communities to vent, to share. You know, we've heard multiple times about some trucks that are terrorizing our youth, and I appreciated the police department being there and being able to speak to that. And, you know, one person thinks that this is their only experience. And then when we're all sharing those experiences, we realize what a collective problem it is. So that's why it's so important that these meetings happen. And like I said, I'm very encouraged, and I found it really, it was heartbreaking, but at the same time, hopeful. And I applaud and appreciate your guys' efforts in that. I know a lot of the times I'm up here and kind of complaining about things that are going on and asking for things. So I wanted to make sure that you guys understood that, you know, we do see the positives and the changes that are happening in the community through your guys' efforts. So I wanted to praise you for that. And I also wanted to mention, just like Adri did, I love the Humanity Campaign. I think that "There's No Place For Hate Between You And I" is exceptional. I just hate this pin, because it does put a man right there in the middle between you and I, which is unfortunate, I think, you know, for women. It might be something that you see as trivial and like a little thing to complain about, but, you know, as a woman, and especially with, I don't know if you're familiar with the Me Too campaign that happened, but you can see how men tend to marginalize women within the community. So it's just something to be aware of when we're making things like this. There was somebody that suggested on the Elk Grove page that unity would have had the same effect, "You and I, there's no place for hate." So, something to think about in future advertisements, because the rest of the campaign that says "Humanity" doesn't actually have this particular logo. It's just these pins and like the bus ads. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Barnbaum, followed by Alana Matthews.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Detrick, members of the city council, city staff, audience and viewers at home. My name is Mike Barnbaum, and I'm tonight addressing the council under public comment in regards to reminder to everybody that E-Trans transit services will be undergoing a change, a big change, between what's operating this week versus what will be operating next week. This is the council will remember, is the action taken to introduce the new service approved under the city's Comprehensive Transit Analysis. So just to highlight some things for people to get a little bit prepared. As you may know, there is a commuter bus route that stops about a block away at Laguna Springs Drive and Red Fox, a very close proximity to this building. That will no longer be a commuter stop beginning next week. If you are going to be attending a city council meeting under the Comprehensive Transit Analysis routes that take effect next week, Route 10 is going to be a new commuter route, and the closest stop on that route will be Big Horn Boulevard and Longleaf Drive. Route 13 is a commuter route, as well as Route 16, that will stop as close as Stockton and Bond. So the walk will be a little bit further when the commuter routes take effect on Monday, October 30. There will be a local route that will replace Route 162 at the Bus Shelter right out in front of City Hall, and that will be called Route 113. Unfortunately, the way the route was designed, that route under the grid system will not go to the Kasoomas River College rail and transfer station to connect with rail or RT or South County Link. However, Route 110 at Longleaf and Big Horn will be a frequent bus route, 30 minutes or better, that will go to Kasoomas River College. The city's most frequent bus route this week locally, Route 156, Elk Grove Boulevard, Bruceville Road, will be called Route 116. But that route will not operate as frequently as it does now, and will not operate as late as it does now. That will be Route 110. If you have any questions, I'll be here throughout the meeting through 10.3. And if you get to your regional board's item, I can also report on what happened at RT. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Alana Matthews. Followed by Randy Becker.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you. I think with all of the excitement that happened on Monday because of the overwhelming response we got at the end and being able to come together, I didn't have an opportunity to publicly thank each and every one of you for just your leadership and being responsive to the situation that happened and all of the current comments that you've been hearing. So to you, Councilmember Nguyen, and Councilmember Hume, Vice Mayor Dietrich, Councilmember Soon, and even the mayor in his absence who communicated he wanted to be there, I really wanted to say thank you. And give a special thank you to Kara and Kristin for their hard work behind the scenes in making sure that was a coordinated effort. And then a special thank you to our Chief of Police and Detective Kevin Papino, who was there, because they were also responsive to the comments that we heard. Anytime there was some, you know, questions about members feeling like they were being profiled or harassed by being pulled over, you immediately said, "That's not tolerated, and we want to know about that." So I definitely wanted to publicly say thank you to everyone who worked behind the scenes to make that effort a success. And I'm really excited about it. So I wanted to even challenge you and Vice Mayor Dietrich, you mentioned having the Multicultural Committee do something quarterly, but even districtally, by your districts, if you can roll out and promote that campaign, and maybe let's have a block party or something at the same time, where we get to know our neighbors. Because I think the more opportunities we have to communicate and fellowship, the more opportunities we have to amplify that voice of unity and love and just affirm, "This is No Place For Hate." Thank you.
Alana, don't walk away. Don't walk away.
Come here, you're not getting away that easily.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I also wanted to thank you for helping us lead this, put it all together. I think you did a great job facilitating, and, you know, just really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Echo that. For those in the audience that weren't there Monday night, Alana was the moderator facilitator for what could have been a really sideways meeting. And she did such a wonderful job that I think everybody knew that they were heard. She really kept her thumb on the people that needed to have their thumbs on them. And she did a wonderful, wonderful job. And I just, I can't thank you enough for taking sort of the vision that we had and turning it into reality. So, thank you.
Councilman.
I, you know, Alana, I've known you for quite some time now and seen you in community events and dinners and whatnot. And this is the first time that I was able to see you in action. And not only did you do a great job, you did an exceptionally amazing job. I don't think we could have found anybody better than the way you handled the entire crowd of 200 there. And that speaks volume in your passion, because I know you've said that before. I've heard you talking to councilmembers saying that this is just, you just want to do this, you know, you care so much. And that really showed through that night. And as you heard the two speakers earlier about how well it was ran, that's all you. And so thank you so much for being a part of it.
Yeah, Alana, I obviously did all the remarks that have been commented. And I kind of just, as we were sitting here and I was listening, I thought about what Scott said during his presentation about the flower and the weed. And you are definitely a flower that brings a sense of peace and comfort to everybody. And I can't thank you enough for, you know, gotten to know you over the last few weeks, and look forward to working with you for a long, long time. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Those were very kind words. Thank you.
Randy, you're up.
Yes, I am. It's been months since I come to you folks, Vice Mayor and council. In fact, it was your first night here. And I told you I hope you had broad shoulders. First of all, I would like to recognize all the young folks in the audience. It is amazing to see that they're here, and it's exciting to see young folks involved in learning about our new city. And that's kind of what I come here to talk to you about in general. About the fact of how many people in this room actually knows how Elk Grove became a city? What steps were taken? How long it took? What took place? And why? Why did it happen? Elk Grove was a little town on the other side of 99 since the 1800s. But why did Elk Grove become a city? We were governed by the County Board of Supervisors. I watched the mess from my home, created over years and decades to where we are today. And the young lady that was just up here, I was apprehensive about going to that meeting, because I felt that it could turn into something horrible. Not dangerously horrible, but something horrible that no one would be heard. I think she did a wonderful job. And I think the presentation and the audience did a wonderful job. I learned some things. It was tough to hear, you know? It was real tough to hear. But it was good to hear it. There were things I disagreed with, that I felt that were not appropriate or factual to the audience. I chose not to speak for the fact that I've never been discriminated against, and it was important to hear those that were. At a later time, if it's necessary or the chance comes up, I have no, I have no problem sharing some of the things that I've experienced in my life, not in that direction. But we need to be more in shaking hands and understanding one another. The one thing I took from it myself was, is how many people stated infractions against them, but didn't bring it to the Chief of Police or anyone in the police department as a follow-up? That concerns me. We can't fix what's broke if somebody thinks it's broke, if those people don't speak up. We can't help it. We can't help them. We can't change. We can't do anything. And to hear somebody make a complaint, we have to think that they actually had a complaint, and it's valid. But we need some interaction, something to say. How can we reach these people that have been wronged in their eyes? Whether it's through your offices, whether it's with the community, whether it's with the police department. I don't believe a policing council is the way to go. We're not there yet, if we ever will be. That's why I started, when I said, "Does everyone know in this room how Elk Grove became a city?" I think we need to educate ourselves before we move forward on a lot of the big projects that are coming to you today outside this room. We need to understand where we've been and where we want to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann.
Okay, that's our last speaker for the public comment. Can we go to the next item, please?
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening. The city manager is out of town, so I'll be delivering this brief report to you this evening. First item is the National Citizen Survey that the city does on a biannual basis.
Jason, could you introduce yourself so the public and everybody knows who you are?
Sure. My name's Jason Bearman. I'm Assistant City Manager.
Thank you.
The National Citizen Survey is something that the city does every two years. Right now, we are conducting surveys that are done anonymously and at random. And starting this Friday, we're going to open it up to all the citizens. They want to go on the city's website. They can fill out the survey. It's ask questions about quality of life, city services. So if you want to have some input into how well the city is doing in delivering of services, please go on the city's website, starting on Friday, and fill out that survey. Was already discussed this evening, which is the Town Hall meeting on Monday regarding race relations. It was a very big success, great turnout. Follow-up meetings are coming up on Monday, October 30, and November 6, at the same location, Elk Grove Park Pavilion's beginning at 6 o'clock. These specific trainings will focus on implicit bias. For those in attendance, if you want to learn more, go to the city's website and register for the event. The new E-Trans routes and service schedules take effect this Sunday. City staff has been very busy advertising those changes to the public. We've worked with Los Rios Community College District, Elk Grove Unified School District, to distribute that information to all the students. We've also got information up on our website. We've advertised the new routes at local events, on buses, social media platforms, and through the E-Trans Rider Alert System. So trying to get the word out. If you want more information, go to the city's website and learn about how those new routes will affect you. Turning over to the Standing Citywide Initiatives update. Civic Center projects are moving along very nicely, on budget, on schedule. One item is on your council agenda this evening, which is the Civic Center Art Project. So you'll see a number of artists and recommendations from our art committee this evening for the city's council's consideration. Also, the animal shelter art, the recommendations from the art committee regarding the placement and types of art that they would like to see is also on the agenda for this evening for the council's consideration. One other item is the Camera Road Widening and Extension Project. The city's been working with the JPA on a large grant application through Infra Federal Grant that's due on November 2. So we're looking forward to submitting that through the JPA, and hopefully we'll have some good news and allow that project to move forward to construction. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Jason? Okay, next item, please.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports and Future Agenda Items.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and start with Councilmember Soon?
Okay, that was a good trick there, Vice Mayor. So since we last met, we had our American Leadership Forum monthly meeting, where I had my first training on implicit bias. Had an opportunity to attend the Teen Center Gala and fundraiser, where I was able to hear a couple of our teen idol finalists sing again. It was a pleasure to hear them. The DiWali Festival, which was mentioned earlier. And then attended the Regional Amazon Bid Ceremony Press Conference over at Golden One Center. And just want to give folks an idea, the Amazon bid is, it's a long shot. I think everybody intuitively might know that. I believe in the region. I think if Amazon's desire was to seek a facility that was in the same time zone, where the workers didn't have to worry about different time zones, and be close to the Bay Area and Silicon Valley, and have frequent flights to their headquarters. headquarters up in the northwestern United States, I think we would compete very well. But nonetheless, I think resources are well-spent to get us learning to operate and compete as a region. It's something that I learned and articulated at a previous council meeting from a trip back to Denver that the Council of Governments took. We had our Secog meeting, Sacramento Council of Governments meeting. Also, was very fortunate to have the opportunity to be on the Mark Haney Biz Radio Talk Show to promote Elk Grove and Innogrove, our technology incubator hub, with Steve Barnett, the CEO of Innogrove. And that was a fun time. With the mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilman Nguyen, we celebrated the 20th anniversary of Chicks in Crisis. I know Whitlow, her great work in our community is always appreciated. Attended with Vice Mayor, with the Vice Mayor, the Strauss Festivals Masquerade and Martini Fundraiser Gala. And then, Sunday morning, participated in the Breast Cancer Awareness Walk, joined 20,000 men and women walking to, from the steps of the Capitol to West Sacramento and back. And then, finally, we talked about earlier, the racial town hall that was mentioned on Monday. And I also want to extend my thanks, not only to Alana and Shari and Summer and Linda, but Kristin and Kara, Carolyn and Carrie, who stayed late to help clean up and took everybody in as they came, receive everybody as they came in the door. Really appreciate all the efforts you guys put forward in such a short manner. And then, of course, Chief, Captain Albright, and Paul, and Kevin, Detective Kevin Pino, all you guys being there in support as well. And then, obviously, all the council being there. It was great to see it. Thoughts on it? I think it was a great start. I think the, it was great to see the turnout, the makeup of the audience, the things that I heard. I wasn't entirely surprised, but I look forward to doing better. I think we have room to do better. And so, what I mean by that is, I mentioned earlier in my opening remarks about creating that space for conversations. And as Randy mentioned earlier, here's some things that he thought he might want to say, but he didn't, for whatever reason, he didn't feel comfortable saying it that night. And I know there's other perspectives out there that didn't come forward that night. And we should have these meetings out in our neighborhoods where we can talk about things and get to know each other better. But sometimes, there are things that are, that kind of, and this leads to the implicit bias training that we're going to talk about next week on the 30th. And I hope you all, anybody who's interested, will come. Because I think you're only able to have those difficult conversations with people or in places that there's trust, where you won't be judged by what you say. You won't be seen with malintent when you say them. And it's incumbent upon all of us who are listening to receive those comments. So, it was a great start, but I felt I know, in fact, that one, I don't call it advantage, one of the things serving in this role up here, you hear all sides. So, I know there are other perspectives out there that didn't come out that evening. And I look forward to when everyone is able to speak their mind, communicate, you know, whether it's a pain or wrongdoing they felt. And then, we can, you know, we can truly have an honest dialogue and get to understand each other's perspective. So, again, I think it was a great start. But you asked me my thoughts, and those are my thoughts. I look forward to continuing to build upon this momentum. Finally, library authorities tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Nguyen.
I actually have a lot to update. Since I missed the last meeting, I was at the 19th Annual Study Mission that the Metro Chamber holds every year, and it was in Austin. And I attended it with Rachel Brown, which is back there. And it was such an amazing event. To be able to see a city be able to bring so many tourism out there and have so many visitors, it's definitely an entertainment type of a city. Live music every evening. Some takeaways I've learned is that though they've got it, seems like they've got it together. There were some issues that they brought up, which was transportation was a huge issue for them. And making sure that housing was affordable for folks that have lived there for many years. So, what I saw is that as our city continues to grow, and as we continue to bring more folks here, that we want to make sure that transportation is definitely something we look at. And I know that our city staff does a really good job at taking a look at that, but also making sure that we have space for folks to be able to afford to live here in this city. And so, I look forward to working with city staff and the council on what I'd learned there and share it here. I attended a fundraiser event for a gentleman named Tony Nguyen, who graduated from Pleasant Grove High School. And weeks after he had graduated, there was a swimming accident that has left him paralyzed from the neck down. And Sharon O'Brien, who is a longtime resident real estate agent here in the city, came to us and said she does not know this gentleman, but she wanted to do something for him, for his family. And to be able to see so many community members come out and support, I think it was over 200 people, and it was held at Sheldon Inn. And I just met with her the other day. There was over $20,000 that was raised, and it's going to help with a special vehicle for his family to be able to transport him to and from physical therapy and to just assist him. I've spoken to Tony, and I've told him that you are young, you're smart, you can still work, you can live a life just like anybody else. And so, one of the things that I did do is I visited the Department of Rehabilitation Open House and talked about what types of services or resources are there for Tony. And so, I'm looking to bring Tony on board to come work for me and pay him, and make sure that he is self-sufficient and that he can live a life just like any one of us. And that, you know, should set an example for anybody else that have any type of a life-changing experience like this. And so, I, you know, Sharon's not here, but kudos to her for bringing the community together. It was so heartwarming for me to be able to see that, both Vice Mayor Dietrich and Councilmember Sun, and I believe our captain, Tim Albright, was there as well, too. I also was able to serve on a panel of speakers at the Exceptional Women of Color Panel with Tracy Stafford, whom some of you may already know. It was wonderful to see, look at in the audience, full of a room of minorities and women of color, who just wanted to hear about our barriers and how we made it out there. So, it was really great for me to be able to share that. I attended the Dewali Festival, which was held right here in our council chambers. And that was very nice to see, a full room. And I believe it's going to be an annual tradition that they're going to want to do. And it looks like we may need to move it somewhere else, because it was a standing room, many young children dressed in a wonderful traditional clothing outfit. And through the department, through the Sheriff's Department, they sent me to a training called Bridge the Racial Divide. It was an all-day training. And what I got out of that was just, there were community members, there were officers, there was deputies from all different jurisdictions. And it was just educating the officers and community members as to the difference that we see every situation. And the implicit bias that is going to happen is going to speak a lot to that. And I'm looking forward to that. I've gone to an implicit bias training. I've done the procedural justice training. And I got so much out of that. So, I'm looking forward to seeing this implicit bias training that we're going to have. My thoughts in the Town Hall meeting. I see many people that were there that night. And as Councilmember Sun had said, it was no surprise to me. I did learn about this truck that everybody gets talking about, that I've never, I've never seen or encountered. But I felt like Ms. Matthews did an amazing job at putting this together. But also, we were allowed to let everybody speak. Time didn't matter to us. Every single person that submitted a comment card was able to go up there and share their story. One of the things that thought that came to my mind is that Ms. Matthews had said maybe doing some district-wide meeting. And so, that is something that I'm looking to hold, and not just to talk about the hate and the racial divide that's happening here in our city, but other issues as well, too. And so, I am going to start doing maybe my very first one. I've been on the council for about 10 months now, and I think I'm about ready to do it. And I ask that maybe I have a council member that's there, because while we are from a district, we vote on the entire city. And so, one of the things that have been very powerful for me in serving on ad hoc committees is having somebody there with me, not only to give the history about the council, but also because at the end of the day, when issues come up to us, when you all come up to us, we all get to vote on what happens in the entire city. And so, having another council member there so that we don't violate the Brown Act is going to not only be able to let them hear your thoughts about what's going on in the district, but also educate the entire community. And so, one of the things, as I think Ms. Audrey had said, is what I got is just that, that maybe we need to do more small town hall meetings so that members of the community can come out and share their opinions or share their concerns. And having the Chief of Police there, or somebody from the Police Department, and maybe some staff there as well, too. I've taken up too much time, so I'm going to give it back to the Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all some good ideas and some good points. We've done some outreach at different times, and it kind of depends, seems to depend where it is in the city. Sometimes, we get a decent response. Other times, we've done outreach and you get one or two people from the public come up. Not that you don't care about the one person who shows up, but when you put a lot of effort into it, you can just as easily do a one-on-one versus put together a whole program for one person.
I have one more, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry. I also attended the Festival of Flavors, which is an organization called Opening Doors that serves refugees that are resettled here in our county. And it is ran by an amazing woman, which many of you may know, which is our former Senator Deborah Ortiz. And what I'm finding out is that as they are resettling refugees, some of them are coming here into our city. So, as we talk about issues that are happening, I want to make sure that we're aware of that as well, too, both on the city side, but that we're also not only educating the refugees that are coming here into our city, but also our Police Department as well, too. Because culturally, there are differences, and we want to make sure that both sides understand as they become acclimated here in our city.
Thank you. So, first item addressed from public comment was Mr. Kelly. We have had this discussion for districts up here from the dice. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip you? I'm sorry. I did. Councilmember, go ahead.
Sorry. I've been out of the country since the last meeting, so I really have nothing to report. But I do have some things I'd like to talk about.
Well, the bookends took so much time, I thought we were already done. There's nothing in the middle.
Hey, easy now. No, let me start by saying I have been out of the country. And so, that's why you'll see a lot of things where my four colleagues were there, and I'm missing. And it's not because I didn't care. It's because I was not here. I did, however, my wife and I, we donated some silent auction items to Tony Nguyen's fundraiser. Sharon got ahold of me on that. I was not able to attend the RT meeting on Monday, as Mike Barnbaum mentioned. Staff did let me know ahead of time. There's nothing of Elk Grove significance on the agenda, so I don't feel it's necessary for a report out. But that's why my alternate could not go as well, is because we went to the community forum on Monday. And I think she's left. I don't see her in the audience anymore. But Ms. Matthews did an outstanding job, as has been mentioned. But the community did an outstanding job. I mean, as Mr. Becker said, a lot of it was not easy to listen to, and a lot of it was a good learning experience. But everybody was respectful and told their stories, some of which were more relevant than others. But everybody, I think, walked away feeling that they'd been heard. And so, I thought it was a good exercise from that standpoint. But I do hope that, as has been mentioned, that as, if we continue the dialogue, that more perspectives get added than maybe just the singular perspective that was touched upon Monday night. And I think that whatever this truck is that was mentioned, we definitely need to be looking to who that person is. And they are being, at the very least, a nuisance, but potentially criminally dangerous in their conduct. But I want to also share a couple of experiences offline with respect to that meeting of that a lot of people who, I won't say that they didn't feel that there was a problem that needed addressing, but they were very surprised that it was as big of an issue as it seems to be. And a lot of people who feel that, you know, and I even myself have kind of taken to trying to have a heightened awareness and just watch interactions with folks. And so, as I drive by Elk Grove High School, which was brought up numerous times, and generally, the east side of Elk Grove, you know, where my district is. And, you know, I'm not saying that I'm blind to it or that it's not going on, but I see a lot of smiling interactions of people of all races, all colors, young and adults. And so, I think that generally, there's a lot of hope for Elk Grove. And that these are potentially isolated cases that hopefully we can figure out a path forward on how to address and bring the community up. Because I don't think that it represents the sentiment of the majority of Elk Grove residents, as it shouldn't. Mr. Kelly, since you're still here, I'll tell you, I've actually signed your petition. And so, as I said to you when we met offline, I don't necessarily have a dog in the fight. I don't see a flaw with the current system. I think there's actually benefits to it, kind of to Councilmember Nguyen's point, in that we have to be geographically diverse as council members, but we are accountable to the entire city voting populace. However, if the voters decide that they'd rather see it by district, then I would abide by that. So, essentially, my position at this point is I'm waiting to see how much momentum you get with that petition. Because, as you mentioned to me, that with the petition, you could put it on the primary election, that it would then take effect for the general election. And so, if that's something that the voters really want, that's a path forward to getting it sooner. So, I'm waiting to see how you do on that.
Would you really just have the council put it on the agenda and have it voted on?
Not yet. Not yet.
So, we don't get to decide on a citywide basis that what we think is best?
I'm saying I want to see how you do with your petition campaign, to see if there really is an upswelling of folks that do want to see a change. So, I'm not saying that I wouldn't vote to do that or ask to do that, but I'm letting you kind of do a little bit of the groundwork ahead of time. Chief, I've spoken with you offline about this, and I've mentioned it to your two predecessors as well. I'm hoping the third time's a charm. But I had brought up in the past the idea of a positive ticketing campaign. We had an incident here recently of a young man who found a wallet on a doorstep. And rather than pilfering it of its cash or putting it in his pocket, he actually noticed there was a camera, and he held it up to the camera to show the folks that he had the wallet and was putting it underneath the mat for when they got home later.
We awarded him at the last meeting.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's one example. But I think every day, your officers probably have interactions wherein somebody did a stand-up thing. And, you know, I'd like to see us partner with local businesses, ice cream shops, or whomever, that we can start having positive interactions with some of these young folks, so that if they see an officer approaching them, their first instinct isn't always that it's going to be bad, that there's something that, you know, positive that comes out of that. And hopefully, it'll go to build a better relationship. So, if you'd be willing to look at doing something like that, I'd certainly offer my help to.
I'd support that. I would, too.
Yeah. Okay. And then, final thing is, everybody, starting on Tuesday, November 1st, the SB 1 gas tax takes effect. And so, your gallon of gas will cost you 12 cents more on Tuesday if you don't fill up your tanks on Monday. So...
Is that it? Okay. So, I just wanted to wrap up with Mr. Kelly. We've had discussions up here in the past, and there's never been enough traction to bring this back as an item. There's pros and cons to both from a district, by a district. I know that Randy was up here speaking earlier about the history back with the Board of Supervisors. He may be a good one to sit down and talk with and get his perspective. I don't know what his perspective is on districting, but if he goes back to the history of Sacramento County, the reason that the residents voted for this model was for the experience they had back at that time.
Actually, from a discards' perspective, the residents didn't vote for this model as such, because they didn't have another choice. So, I've gone back and done that. I had a conversation with the lady that's going to run for mayor. She said to me, "Oh, I'm really happy that you're supporting this. This is so important that we do this." And I said, "Well, I think you've missed my point then." She says, "What do you mean?" I said, "Well, I'm not sure that I'm in favor..." I said, "Well, I'm not sure that I'm in favor of my district. I, I have evolved to the, to the point where I think it's more important that we put it on the ballot, so that our fellow citizens can make that decision, not the five of you, but your fellow citizens. Doesn't have to be good, it doesn't have to be bad, and you could certainly argue your case once it gets on the ballot, that you're opposed it or you're in favor of. That is not my point. Make it clear. My point is, the citizens of this city should have the right to make that decision, and the five of you are denying us that right. I don't care if you vote for it. I don't care if you put rotten things in the paper about it. And there are pros and cons. The point that you're missing is, this is about 100,000 folks that vote in this city having a right to decide for themselves what they want, not what you want. You're missing the point. What they want, not what you guys want.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. As far as the meeting on Monday night, I echo all the comments that have been made. You know, there's, there's so much to learn. Again, I wasn't surprised by what I heard. I was disappointed with some of the things I heard, but I wasn't surprised. Disappointed in the aspect of those type of behaviors from anybody is unacceptable. And as was mentioned, we don't know to the level that this goes on in the community, but one time, one event to somebody is one too many. So I look forward to see how we continue with the next two meetings, what comes from those, and then where we go from there. As you heard tonight, our multicultural committee is tasked with this as well. They're gonna look at ways to be able to escalate things. We've got the campaign that's being done. This is something that I think is gonna have to be 24/7/365. This is not something that's gonna get fixed in the next two weeks, two months, or two years. This is something that'll have to be ongoing education. And there's one item that I kinda took away from the other night, and as being a, a father, a grandparent, being a coach, mentoring a lot of young men and women, I would like to send a letter to the school district, and hopefully there'd be consensus from the rest of the council, that we would highly encourage and request them to start at the kindergarten level, to have more exposure on how we interact with one another, and have them all have a better understanding of education. So I don't know if I'd have the support of the rest of the council to have a letter from the council go to, to, as, as we be the, since we're the mother and father, so to speak, of the city, I think leading as a parent is, leading as an example to the school district of our support for a mission that we believe needs to be done.
Generally, I'd be in support of that. I'd have to see kind of specifically what we're calling out for them to do, but I think that there were a couple of recurring themes that occurred at the meeting, and definitely better education and, and teaching of children, both at home and at the school district, definitely seemed to come up on more than one occasion.
So in concept, would you support that? And we can work the details out through Mr. Hobbs and the rest of the staff?
You know, I, I would personally like us to see, I mean, what, what has been happening with our two-by-twos?
Well, I had that as well, that we would, we would have that with our two-by-two, but I think to formalize it in a letter form from the entire council is a very powerful message. And that was my thought of doing it from the entire council.
Yeah.
Is there an option to do a joint meeting with the, the school board members?
Well, we do have our two-by-twos, but that's only two of us, but I'd like to have something where a formal letter goes, and when we have our two-by-twos, this will be part of the discussion as well.
Rather than the two-by-two, I mean, the, the full council and the full school board members having a...
Well, I'm not saying a meeting, I'm saying a letter.
She's asking if we could, though.
If we'd have, if we did, if we did a full meeting, we'd have to do a, a public notice meeting.
You know, Bobby Singh Allen was there, and she's in support of having more cultural, you know, education for the kids. I think we all kinda agreed on that. I, you know, I don't, I think I'm with councilmember, I, I support it, I just think we need to work on the letter a little bit. If it's about curriculum, that's not something the school district can do. I think that, that's a little bit higher up, that needs to change up there.
Yeah, what, so, I just, I'm just very respectful of where our governance ends and where the schools begins, and so, I think, you know, residents have been, you know, our best advocates towards us and towards the school district. And I certainly think the two-by-two, we should make our feelings known. I think having a joint meeting where we could talk about things together and just explain what we're hearing. I mean, and as Councilwoman Wynn mentioned, one member, Singh Allen, was there, so she heard as, so, I guess I'm open to the idea, but I just am very cognizant of the, the governance.
Well, I think if we do it in just, just a letter of support for the concept, not, not telling them what to do, but just that, you know, we're seeing this, we're feeling it, we're hearing this, and we want to show that we support the school district's efforts all the way, you know, from, from K through 12.
Okay, something like that, I, I could...
Or in a generic sense, not in a, in a, in a, in a positive support manner, not in a dictatorial sense, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I like that.
Okay.
So we'll bring a letter back for the council's consideration.
Perfect. Councilman Hume?
Yeah, I just have one more thing that I had written down that I forgot to get to. Kristin, I don't know, as we roll out this humanity campaign, the issue that was brought up with respect of how the formatting of the word seems to highlight "man" in the middle of it, to the extent that that causes people to not accept the larger message, I think that's working against what we're trying to do. So maybe we can look at, if we do another run of buttons or, or expand that logo, I think the idea of using other words that have "you" and "I" in it, humanity, unity, I can't think of any, another one off the top of my head, but you give me a little bit, and I would. But I think that'd be good to maybe expand that as well.
I, I could support that. I, I think it's only the button that has it in that format, correct?
No.
Oh, the bus shelter does, too? Okay.
Are, are those already made?
They're in production.
Okay.
Well, depending what the production cost is, that before they're done and put up, we may wanna consider if there's a way to modify it, if it's not extremely expensive.
I know, why don't we, well, it's in production, but maybe you take out one of the letters, like the A in "man," and put a symbol like a heart or something, and so, it's not the word "man," is that, is that, would that be agreeable? We've got a lot of money poured into this campaign here, so...
It's private research, you got public information.
We didn't even see it either till, you know, I, I saw it the day before, but, but anyway, I do appreciate the work that's been done. I think the intentions were, were good, so...
Very clever slogan. Yeah, I love this slogan, it's just the particular, that particular logo for it. The logo that's on the video, the logo that's on the license plate, and on all of the other characters in it, it's fantastic. But when they try to get down and put it in that block, that's more than... I was not the only person that, after that, you know, it's not offensive, but just like, it was the first, first thing that a lot of people saw.
Well, as you, as you can see, that everything wasn't done that way, so it wasn't intentional.
Yeah, I know, I agree.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll work with Kristin on that. Kristin, you guys did a great job. Sometimes those are unintended consequences, that, you know, when you're in it and you're doing it, sometimes you just don't see it. And so, it's unfortunate. Did you, did you wanna come up here and say something?
I don't necessarily wanna come up, but I just wanted to say to that, because one of the things you mentioned was taking it to the schools, and if I think about taking it, just a different opinion, to an elementary level, if you think about humanity, kids are kinda clocking out those syllables, so that's one of the things that we can get them to understand, you know, being humane, understanding what humanity means, and putting a word to, or a symbol to it. So, it's kinda looking at both sides of it. I don't necessarily find it offensive, or it didn't, it didn't take me that, but when I think about my kids learning or understanding, and we learn humanity, we clock it out, my last name's long, so I clock out everything, but just a, a difference of opinion to what that symbol, or what that word stands for. And we're taking it to the kids and making sure that they grow, understanding that we wanna have a no-hate community, and that we want to be involved together, let's look at it from an elementary level.
Thank you. Good perspective.
Understanding, there's another word with a U and an I.
So one other item relative to this, that I spoke about, and Councilman Hume hit on it, where I think we can do a better job collectively, is the citizens, when there's an incident, y, y, you can't just let it pass by. And that's why I mentioned, just about everybody nowadays has a cell phone. So use your cell phone, whether it's you have to make a call in emergency, or if there's a situation, take a video or a picture, or write down the license plate number if it's a truck. If it's an, really, emergency, life and death situation of, and you feel threatened, 911. And then if it's not, I mean, somebody did something, they're gone, but you got their license plate, or you got a photo or a video, or, or, just so you know, our non-emergency police number is 916-714-5115. So if you call, and that's on our city website, if you, if you don't have it, or you can email any of us, and we'll get that to you, but that's, that's a good one. I have all those programmed in my phone, so if something comes up, I'm ready to hit that and make the call for those type of things. As far as the other items, I'm not gonna repeat everything that I went to that everybody else did, but just the differences. There's a new organization, it's the North Laguna Creek Community Association, and they are from Laguna Boulevard to Calvine, and from Highway 99 to Franklin. So it overlaps the city of Elk Grove and the city of Sacramento. And it's, it's actually an interesting concept. Officer Washington was there, representing our PD. Shane, Shane was there, and we all spoke, and they're trying to build this coalition to make their community better. They wanna make their community cleaner, safer, improve their property values, and I think it's very admirable, and I've emailed quite a few of our staff to see where we can help. And at rough guess, this is, this is probably 60,000 people within that geographic area. So it's potentially a big number of people that we could service, where it overlaps, and that's also where, when you sometimes have a better collaboration on your borders, you make your city safer, not just internally, but from external. So look forward to working with them. Went to the Elk Grove Chamber Mixer at Valley Oak Appliance, always a great event, bringing all the community leaders and business leaders together, and celebrating something in common of, you know, breaking bread with your fellow business people. I went to the Camden Spur Grand Opening. That's the bridge that goes over Camden Lake and Laguna Creek. Extends now, ties in our trail system from Bond Road north to Sheldon Road, and so they never had that conductivity. So each little step we're doing is interconnecting our trail system. And in fact, I went out for a bike ride with my son yesterday, and we went over the new bridge, and then rode over to the freeway pedestrian bridge, and rode over into Laguna, down over to Lewis Stein, and back to Sheldon and around. So it's getting more and more of that conductivity, and those are huge quality of life issues. Also attended the Racist and Justice Forum that was hosted last Wednesday, and so, a lot of the same people, a lot of the same issues, and just look forward to moving those items into a more positive place. As we saw that we can do better as a council, our staff can do better, and the citizens can do better. So if we all raise the bar for each of us a little bit, it's just gonna make us that much better. Had an opportunity to be the guest speaker at a fairly new nonprofit called Accepta. They work with special needs children, and the founders are here in Elk Grove, but they work regionally. And so, working with special needs children is very, very tough, to have those as your children. You know, obviously, there's a lot of love there, but boy, the day-in and day-out needs that these children have affects the mother and father, brothers, sisters, aunts and uncles, the whole community. So anytime you have an opportunity to reach out and help somebody with special needs, take that extra minute. And then sometimes people don't have time, they have a little extra money, make a donation. But definitely another worthwhile organization to support those in need. That's all I have. So we'll move on to next item.
Takes on to section eight, our consent calendar items.
Okay, so we'll open public comment. I don't see anybody signed up to speak. We'll close public comment, and counsel deliberation or direction.
I'll move consent calendar.
I don't, you know, and I don't have a question, but I do have a comment on 8.8, Bob Murdock. I am able to see the Gilliam Drive Trail Connector being utilized, and they're such an amazing job. I, I wanna give kudos to you and your team on that. And then I also wanna point out that Ms. Nan Mahan is here, and that is because she has been waiting for this moment, for the changing of the name from the City of Elk Grove Committee of the Arts to the City of the Elk Grove Arts Commission. So I know she's been waiting on that for some time now.
Somebody's second my motion.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sent to none, passes 4-0. Next item.
It'll take us to section nine, our public hearing, starting with item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider determination of public convenience or necessity for type 21 off-sale general alcohol license of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for Terra Properties Convenience Store Chevron, proposed to be located southwest, southwest corner of Cameron Road and Promenade Parkway.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Kristi Graybell, and I'm here to present to you the Terra Properties PCN EG 17-029. Like mentioned, this is a request for determination of public convenience or necessity for type 21 off-sale alcohol high licenses of, for beer, wine, or distilled spirits. The subject site is the southwest corner of Cameron Road and Promenade Parkway to accommodate a future Chevron gas station and convenience store. The site is located in District F of the Lent Ranch Special Planning Area, part of the district development plan that was approved in 2008. That plan included a gas station, a drive-through, a hotel, and inline stores. It also allowed for staff to approve the architecture of each individual building, and as of right now, the Chevron building for the site is in review with planning. Alcohol beverage control, which is ABC, requires a PCN when an establishment is located within a high crime area or in a census that is deemed to be over-concentrated. In this situation, it's deemed over-concentrated, and PD, which, Police Department, has reviewed and supports the request. The census track that this site is located within is approximately 30,000 acres, and ABC only allows only two off-site licenses, or off-sale licenses, before determining it's over-concentrated. Currently, there are four active licenses and two that were recently approved by council and pending with ABC. The project is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15061B3, which is the general rule. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and approving the PCN request. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Kristi, I think you're off the hook.
Hey.
Okay, we'll declare the public hearing open, and I'd like to invite the applicant out, Terra Properties, Darshan Monday? Are you gonna, oh, it's Jim Gillum gonna serve. Hello, Darshan.
Councilman, excuse me, Vice Mayor Detrick, councilmembers, Jim Gillum of Gillum Consulting, representing Darshan Monday, Terra Properties, the operator of the, the proposed Chevron. I, I can give a brief presentation or answer questions. What is at the pleasure of the council?
You want us to, um, do you have any questions of Jim or Darshan? Is there anything you'd like to tell us about what other businesses you have, Darshan, and, in the, in the, do you have any in Elk Grove or just around the region?
Good evening, everybody. No, I don't have any in Elk Grove, this is the first one, I have in Sacramento...
one I have in Sacramento.
Number one.
So, this is the first step to get in your city. I have in Sacramento County, City, Davis, and like, city sites in those locations, I have Chevrons.
Okay. You have any questions?
No.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we'll open the public comment. And we have no one signed up to speak. We'll close public comment. And I'm assuming you don't want to come back up here and rebuke yourself, right?
Okay.
So, we'll declare the public comment. Public hearing closed, and we'll do counsel deliberation and/or direction.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention none, passes 4-0. Next item. Congratulations. Darshan, thank you for your investment in Elk Grove.
And that'll take us on to Item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider the 45th annexation of Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 for Maintenance Services.
Good evening. I'm Cara Taylor Siemens, Finance Analyst with City of Elk Grove, and I'm here to present the public hearing for this annexation. I do have a presentation, but I'm willing and happy to waive it in the interest of time, if you would like.
Hi, Cara. I love your spirit. I'm going to propose to waive the presentation.
Waiver.
Yeah, we let her get her name out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll declare the public hearing open. Go to open public comment. And I don't see anyone signed up to speak, so we'll close public comment, declare the public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation and/or direction.
Oh, I see. You give me the long ones.
No, I'm looking past you, Councilman Hume.
Second. You moved it, I second.
All right, I'll move the resolution. Call a special election.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention none, 4-0. Can we request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of those 24 possible votes, 24 affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure, and a resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion two?
Yeah, I'll move the, adopt the resolution declaring the results.
A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions none, 4-0. And motion three, has to be read.
I will introduce and waive the full reading by substitution, the title only in ordinance levying and portioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services Annexation Number 45 and Amending Elk Grove Minus Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions none, so 4-0 again. Next item.
Take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with Item 10.1, which is to consider the proposals submitted for the Civic Center Public Art Project and subsequent actions. I'll let Nathan take it from there.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Detrick, members of the council. Nathan Bagwell, I'm serving as your senior project analyst interim. I have the pleasure this evening of bringing before you, for your consideration, Civic Center Public Art. The recommended action tonight is to approve the artwork as recommended by the review committee. This would authorize the city manager to execute contracts with the respective artists. There are eight different artworks being proposed, two of which we are requesting that the council go ahead and reject the proposals submitted. These would be for the exterior kinetic wind piece and music sculpture. We would like to go back out to RFP for both. And lastly, we are recommending to amend the CIP and the fiscal year budget by $100,000 from the General Fund Capital Reserve for the addition of a reflecting pool at the base of the exterior iconic piece, all of which items I will be getting into in greater detail, just really getting into this at the onset. So, some background, in July of 2016, you approved the Civic Center Development Plan. Final design began shortly thereafter, and you awarded the project in March of 2017. On the art side, in November of 2016, you adopted a resolution to implement a program called Percent for the Arts. Now, what this program does, it allocates a percentage of construction costs for eligible projects to be set aside for public art. And pursuant to this policy, the art budget for the Civic Center is $500,000. In June, the city posted a request for proposals inviting artists to submit proposals for the commissioning of artwork. The deadline was August 16. We received 21 proposals, excuse me, from 21 different artists. A review committee was formed. It consisted of all of the members of the city's now commission for the arts, as well as three staff, city staff, the project architect, facilities manager, and the assistant city manager. This is a summary of the art and locations. There are a total of eight total pieces. The first two are interior pieces. They will go into the main community center, Phase 1 of the Civic Center. And the additional pieces are all exterior. So, we'll be going now, from this point forward, we'll be talking about each individual recommendation that the committee has put forward, and any additional caveats with that. And feel free to jump in at any point if you have anything you'd like me to clarify, or are there any questions about a particular piece. I'd be happy to address that for you. Also, we do have, many of the artists have come tonight, some from great distances, to meet you, introduce themselves, and answer any questions you may have additionally about their proposals. This map is actually, there's a copy of this in front of you as well. This is also part of the staff report. I put this in here and gave you a copy specifically because we're going to be referencing Interior A, Exterior E, a lot, so I thought it would be helpful to have a visual aid. But again, this is also in the staff report. So, we'll get right into the recommendations. We'll start with Interior A. What this is, it is in the main community center. It's a ceiling-hung, three-dimensional piece. The theme is multicultural, and the budget for this is $125,000. The recommendation is a proposal to be accepted from Ben Phipps Studio. It is a 10-by-14 hanging installation, and it consists of transparent polymer glass hands that will hang down from the ceiling like prisms. And the molds will each spell a different letter of the sign language alphabet that spells unity. The hands at the center of the artwork will be multicolored, and will create a visual globe. On the next page, I have a example of this. So, this is an example, conceptual drawing, what it would look like. As you can see, the globe in the middle there. And then, here are a couple other angles to look at and consider. And the bottom left-hand side is the, is an example of the mold of the hands forming the letters unity from the sign language alphabet. So, the next item for consideration, artwork for consideration, is Interior B. This is a wall mural.
Can I stop you for saying anything?
Yes, of course.
Can you go back?
Yeah.
I think this is very creative. It's hanging up in the ceiling. Will there be something, there's a legend or something, somewhere that folks will be able to see that what the actual, just what you see, you have displayed here. Will that be somewhere that folks will be able to know that? Otherwise, if you're just looking, you may not, you know, folks might not catch it.
It might be lost on you if it's not. Yeah, that's an excellent suggestion. We can certainly request that. I haven't heard that contemplated, but I can certainly inquire about that.
Okay. I mean, I personally don't know sign language. If I just looked here, when it was up there, you might just walk by and miss it. But I think it's a, it's a very clever, creative way to do this, and I just wouldn't want it to get lost.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Interior B is a wall mural. The theme is history of Elk Grove. The NTE budget, not-to-exceed budget is $25,000, and the recommendation from the review committee is to work with an artist named Adrian Littman. Adrian is here tonight. The proposed mural is going to be approximately 10 feet tall by 25 feet wide, and the artist has agreed to, a couple caveats with regards to the mural at the request of the review committee. He has agreed to meet with the city's historical society, as the theme is history of Elk Grove, and he will be incorporating images at their suggestion. He also has agreed to incorporate color schemes consistent with the interior of the community center, so that, to make sure that it all complements the ambiance of the interior of the community center. So, here is a picture of the concept. Again, the actual images are going to change based on Mr. Littman meeting with the historical society and the colors as well. Moving on, this is the Exterior C. We call this the iconic art piece. This is to be located in the center of the Commons area. The theme was left open for artistic interpretation, and the not-to-exceed budget was $200,000. The recommendation from the committee is to work with an artist named Gordon Huether. The sculpture is to be approximately 12 feet wide by 24 feet tall, rather tall. The inspiration for the sculpture is taken from the various water elements at the Civic Center, such as the aquatics complex, the water fountain jets up right there in the Commons. It's consistent with where it's located. It's right there in the middle between the community center and the aquatics complex. The rings of the sculpture are designed to appear as though it's emerging from the ground, like a surge of water, like a tropley. The sculpture is illuminated at night. It has slowly shifting array of LED lights that can be programmed and changed at the city's discretion. So, here is a concept drawing of the proposal. This would be a daytime view. And the next one is a nighttime drawing. It shows some of the different color options that the artwork can transition to. So, there were a couple of concerns that the committee had with regards to safety on this particular item, one of them being the potential of climbing on the structure. So, the artist has agreed to, with regards to the spacing of the tubing, six feet high and below, they'll be closer together. When the artist was talking with the review committee, he came and met with them. They mutually concurred that a shallow reflective pool at the base of the structure would be a complementary aesthetic, would also further deter unwanted climbing of the structure. The addition of a reflective pool, however, would require an additional $100,000 estimated for the Civic Center Public Art Budget. The funds would then be taken from the General Fund Capital Reserve. If council elects to include the shallow reflecting pool, the city's design team will work with the artist to integrate the pool with the artwork. I have a few more things to say about that, but I'll go ahead and I'll give you, this is a look at what it could look like. This is by no means the final design. The artist's studio was kind enough to provide a conceptual schematic, just to give us sort of a visual in terms of this conversation. Should council go forward with electing to have this pool installed, the city itself actually would be designing and installing and working with the artist to integrate this with the ambiance of the Commons, as well as complementing the art structure itself. And this is another picture of how it might look. Councilmember Suen, as a follow-up to our conversation the other day, why is, $100,000 is a lot of money. So, why, and so, I have had an opportunity to connect with the project architect about this specifically, and to get some specifics on this. Basically, my question was, if you can install a pool for $50,000, a really nice pool, why would a shallow reflective pool, something perhaps very small, cost more? Essentially, the answer is that it, it's because it includes soft and hard costs. The biggest portion of the construction would be the concrete foundation and the former underground equipment vault, surge tank, all the considerations with prevailing wage, permits. Basically, it ramps up the price when it becomes a public works project. So, I found that when I was asking the pool question, it was really apples to oranges. Wasn't necessarily straight comparison, different types of construction cycles. But, again, that is a lot of money, so we did ask that question and get some further clarification.
Why don't we have the pool, where they're building the pool, why don't they build this at the same time and reduce the cost?
I'm not sure.
We can look into that, right? We can look into that.
I was totally not ready for that question.
Well, maybe they're already there, so you're not mobilizing. They should be able to...
That would be the intent, is that we complete the design, and then, assuming the contractor was still on site, we'd do a change order to allow them to move forward and continue that work.
Yeah, and I would sure hope that a change order while they're already on site wouldn't cost $100,000 for a small project like that.
We're not sure exactly what it's going to cost. That's a budget estimate for the council, based on the information. We haven't designed it yet, so we think $100,000 is sufficient to do what we need to do to get it done.
Well, I just want to clarify. So, Nathan, when you asked about the cost of the pool and all, did the order of magnitude estimate still come out near $100,000?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure thing. So, the next item for consideration would be Exterior D. This is a kinetic wind piece located in the Commons area. It is proposed to be 24 feet tall by 16 feet in diameter, and the theme proposed is Elk Grove's Delta Breezes with a not-to-exceed budget of $50,000. After carefully considering each proposal submitted for the kinetic wind sculpture, the review committee recommends rejecting all proposals and soliciting new proposals going back out to RFP. That brings us to Exterior E. This is actually four separate sculptures that are listed under Exterior E. This is what we refer to as our Avenue for the Arts. Each sculpture is to represent a different artistic medium, literature, dance, visual arts, and music. Each sculpture has a separate, not-to-exceed budget of $25,000. So, I'll get right into the recommendations. The literature sculpture, the recommended artist is, again, Mr. Littman. He's the only artist who had two proposals who are being recommended this evening. It is proposed to be approximately eight feet tall and four feet wide. The sculpture resembles two large books leaning against one another with a pair of eyeglasses resting atop. I believe Mr. Littman also has a smaller scale model for you to take a look at this evening. The review committee indicated they would like to see the Grapes of Wrath etched on the outside of the sculpture, as well as an excerpt from the novel be etched onto the pages of the sculpture. And here's a picture of, for scale, he has drawn a model standing next to it, giving you an idea what this would look like.
But was there any mention, why, why the Grapes of Wrath?
Specifically, I believe that was just a preference of the committee themselves. I didn't get too much into really why. It was a suggestion, and it came forward. He said he could do it.
No reasoning for, okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. So, moving on to the sculpture Dance. The recommended artist, Trevor O'Toole, also here this evening. The sculpture is to be approximately 10 feet tall by 6 feet wide. It is a geometric figure suspended animation. It's meant to capture the movement of a body of a dance as a dancer performs. So, here's a look at the proposed sculpture from four different viewpoints. Next is the Visual Arts. The recommended artist is Victor Verhovod. The proposed sculpture will be approximately eight feet tall and eight feet wide. Sculpture depicts an artist with a palette and a brush in hand, painting a silhouette of a gracefully posing model. The image on the left is actually new today. I just got this this afternoon from the artist. We did have some modifications. We requested that the palette be larger in the artist's hand. So, as you can see here, it's the artist sitting down, and he's painting a model. Lastly, there is the music sculpture, and this is the other component that after carefully considering each proposal submitted, for the music sculpture, the review committee recommends rejecting all proposals and going back out to RFP. Maintenance. So, as a requirement of the contract to purchase artwork, it does, the draft of the contract does address ongoing maintenance. The city agrees to reasonably ensure the work is properly maintained and protected, and the artists are required to warrant and maintain the work for the first year. The overall cost of the maintenance of the artwork is projected to be nominal. So, on the next slide, I do have consideration for each particular art piece. Interior A, again, that's the hanging hands. Confering with the artist, basically, the LED light bulbs would need to be changed every five to eight years. He said we probably need to dust it off occasionally and regularly, and that would pretty much be the extent of what he foresees as the maintenance. Interior B, the mural, Adrian said it probably could use a new clear coat every five years, but not too expensive, probably less than a couple hundred bucks. Exterior C, the iconic piece, they literally said it just needs to be occasionally cleaned with soap and water, nothing spectacular. I think they said microfiber cloth, but really, nothing really cost prohibitive. Exterior D would be to be determined, as we are requesting to go back out to RFP, of the four sculptures in the exterior, the literature. Again, Mr. Littman said, basically, that it would require an annual cleaning, soap and water. The dance, Mr. O'Toole suggested that the life of the paint is estimated to be about seven to 10 years. An annual pressure wash would probably be required. Mr. Verhovod said the visual arts, a one-time anti-graffiti clear coat, probably less than a few hundred dollars, would be basically ongoing maintenance with regards to that piece. And then, again, the music would be determined if we do, in fact, go back out to RFP. The contract administration. So, oversight of the artist contract, the Civic Center, this is a new and unique challenge for the city of Elk Grove. We've never actually taken this on before. This has been an interesting experience for us. We've learned that there are a lot of nuances and caveats to working, not just with the art community, but with working with artists and working and administering art to ensure that they stay on schedule, on budget. So, one of the conversations happening right now is we're talking to SMAC, the Sacramento Municipal Art Commission. And they actually do consulting work to contract administration. They can actually take it from start to finish. So, in this particular case, we've been talking to them and negotiating with them about picking up from this point forward, if you say, to go ahead and authorize the contracts. They could actually oversee the contracts, working with the artists. In my opinion, really, kind of speaking their language and understanding the, more along the lines of the profession, than perhaps we have a specialist on hand to do that now. Not saying we couldn't do it, but I think we might be able to leverage their expertise in that regard. So, if the amount of the consulting assistance from SMAC requires council approval, we'll come back with a recommendation at a later time. So, again, this is the recommendation. We are...
Nathan, have they given you any idea what... Have they given you any idea what that cost would be?
They did. Anywhere from 15% to 18% is what they typically charge. However, in this particular case, that would be like a full service, all the way from RFP to fabrication and installation. So with regards to the six that we're proposing tonight, we've already gone through RFP and we've already brought forward recommendations for artists. So there has been conversations about reducing that fee for those particular contracts.
And that's a fee that is currently being incorporated. If we did it with city staff, do you know what the delta would be on that? If any?
If we did it with city staff?
The city staff's got to be... You've got to have that price built into the cost of this project, so if you're going to not have city staff doing it, are you going out of tight contract?
What the savings would be if we did it?
Or is it just cost neutral?
It would be difficult for me to say really what the time savings would be in that. We really haven't done this before, and so that's kind of my initial response to that. I can tell you from doing the RFP myself, I probably spent about 80 hours on something like this, and I had a tremendous amount of help from Jason and John. A lot of time went into creating these RFPs, and we even had help from SMAC in that regard. So I... it would be tough. I don't want to give you a bad answer. I would say that really it would be not so much necessarily a cost savings as it would be... they would be educating us as to how they do this, and I think there's the, like we said, leveraging their experience with working with artists, keeping them on schedule and on budget, and ensuring that when they give us their milestone check-ins, that what they're saying is reasonable and makes sense to them, whereas we haven't really done that so much in the past. So I think that's kind of where that came from. So the recommended action is to approve the artwork as recommended by the review committee. What this does is authorizes the city manager to execute contracts with the artists for interior A and B, exterior C, and three of the four proposed sculptures for exterior E, the literature, dance, and visual arts. We're also recommending to reject proposals submitted for the exterior kinetic wind piece and music sculpture and going back out to RFP. And lastly, recommending that to amend the fiscal year's 2017-22 capital improvement plan and current fiscal year budget by adding $100,000 from the general fund capital reserve for the addition of the reflecting pool. So that is the conclusion of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Nathan?
I ask my questions.
Yep. I think we're good to go on that, so we'll open public comment. And scroll back to the top here. Adrian Littman, you're the first speaker, followed by Trevor O'Toole.
Good evening, city council members and audience.
Welcome.
I'm Adrian Littman. Lucky to be here to present two projects. Hopefully it will beautify your city and everybody will be happy, and I get a big check at the end. As you've seen in the presentation, I have two projects. One is a sculpture that's going to be installed in the alley for the arts, and I have a model of it here if you'd like to see it.
Sure, please. Absolutely.
This is the model. It's not the original model that I made, which was made of brushed stainless steel, but unfortunately it disappeared along with my studio and my house in Santa Rosa.
Oh, very sorry to hear that.
So in one week that I had available after recovering a space to work and live, I only could do this thing, which is made out of cardboard. So the real material is here. This is how it's going to look. It's brushed stainless steel, highest commercial grade. No worries about maintenance, ever. It's going to be there forever. The only problem could be vandalism. Graffiti, it's easy to clean up. Scratches, minor scratches, can be fixed with a wire brush. And real vandalism, like somebody running a truck into it, it's a different issue. But basically, the sculpture would be made out of totally stainless steel. There is an option to make the eyeglasses frame out of stainless steel or copper. I would prefer copper, just for the contrast. It tarnishes and turns greenish, patina in time, which looks good, has a natural feel to it. And I just found out from the presentation what the title would be engraved on it. I thought the committee for the arts is going to give me a list or have me research and decide what the title will be, but I think it's already decided. And that's going to be either engraved or laser cut into the face of the wall, sorry, and on the spine. So if you have any questions on this, I'll be glad to answer.
Well, first, sorry for your loss.
Yes.
Appreciate the extra effort that you took to have something to present to us tonight was...
I don't have a choice. I have to do it.
Thank you.
And I'm glad I have this thing, so I can put the money back into rebuilding my studio.
Any questions?
Just wanted to say you're very talented, and we appreciate you submitting this for the competition.
Thank you.
I do want to ask you about, I just thought of this, the proposal. Was that... when you saw the proposal, how did that come across to you? Was it easily interpreted? Did you have any issues with...
You mean the request for qualifications?
Yes. Well, yeah, and the proposal requirements, yeah.
No, it was pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, okay.
I've been through this many times in the past 20 years, so I didn't find anything. It was pretty clear, and I would say a lot less demanding than other projects I've been working on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so the other project is the interior mural with the historic theme, and you've seen, this was just my initial layout for it, and after I will meet with the historic society. I will finalize whatever images have to go in. I'll make another presentation to scale with all the details and bring it back to the historic society. It may come back for you, to you, for approval. I'm not so sure. Somebody is going to approve, but I'm going to make a final thing before we go live.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
That's it. Any questions on this?
No questions, but I appreciate you being here tonight.
Well, I don't know if it pleases the council, but I'd like to see maybe that what, when you develop the full slate of pictures, maybe what those might be, so...
Yeah. I'll send it back here, or I'll come back and present it to you again, but that was the agreement.
Okay.
To do it. And I need that for myself, too, as a guidance to do the mural.
Great. Thank you. That looks great what you did there, by the way, too. I like the colors as well. Thanks.
Okay, next speaker is Trevor O'Toole.
Councilmembers, just here to introduce myself, Trevor O'Toole. I'm doing the dance. I was wondering if there's any questions.
Thank you for your submission.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm excited to do it. I'm excited. Looking forward to it.
You look like you're excited. You're pumped up, ready to go.
Yeah. A little nervous, a little nervous. First time doing this.
It's all right. You know, when you get nervous, you know, you get the butterflies, just get them in formation, going the same direction.
True.
Trevor, I have a question for you. So we know Peter's from Santa Rosa. How about yourself?
I'm from Arizona.
Arizona, okay. Oh, that's right. I was in here. Yeah, that's right, I remember now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, just got in four o'clock today.
Wow, thanks for coming up here tonight.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
How you guys doing? Again, thank you for having me. So my proposal was the hanging sculpture. And really, I'm an environmental-based artist, so a lot of the material I work with is recycled types of material, and I brought examples. I'll try to make it fast. A little bit of background on the project. So most of the plastic in the country travels around. It's called a nerdle. It's kind of these optical grid pellets, so how your eyewear is manufactured, as well as other types of optical devices. So the problem is because it's a pellet, it... let's say there's a spill in the ocean, these get out. It's a main issue for, you know, save the bay, heal the bay. The fish eat these types of nerdles. So what I do is I'll contact companies that have a... so optical companies, they'll have waste material, they have a flood, and I'll use this type of material to recycle the product. So the sculpture will actually be made from recycled product. So its lead is leadership in energy and environmental design. So it's kind of what I base out of, base my artwork designs out of. So it's recycled, regional, so technically for the rules for regionally, you have to be within 500 miles, so all the work will be manufactured within 500 miles of Elk Grove and innovation and design. So these are just kind of the recycled, literally, or I could take rejected eyewear, these types of, that image on the right, and grind it up and make the sculpture out of it. So again, I brought a hand as well, yearly, like light up. You can kind of see what, I can pass around if you want, what the product looks like. So it's literally molded, molded hands that are in the sign language shapes of Unity, U-N-I-T-Y. So I've already molded early prototypes of the hands, so I brought an eye, for example. This is an eye. No problem, I brought a Y as well. Sorry, I stuffed them in my suit jacket. So there you go. Bring it up. So those are just the early... I hadn't done that form of work before, so just for this proposal, I'd gone through the molding process. I'd done other types of molding, but so I did that work, just so you could have an idea what the product looks like. So literally, I'd gotten from your city architect the Revit files. So I'd had the files for the actual construction, so this, and then I inputted the model. So these are literally close to, it's actually over 1,000 molded hanging hands in the space. So that's actually a rendering of the art piece in your space.
Can I ask you a question about that before you go on?
Sure.
All those hands surrounding the globe, is that where the unity will actually be, or how does the unity get...
Yeah, so the entire structure will be unity. So the... there's a full metal grid, and on the metal grid, there are hands hanging in a string, and every single line will have unity.
I see, so it'll be the U all the way down to the Y from the grid.
Exactly. So there's actually seven hands hanging, so it's the full unity, and then maybe two other hands, so there'll be an additional mold made. So the entire piece will have a clear unity every single string, and in the center, there'll be molded of green and blue in a globe, so I'll hang the blue and green hands to form a globe in the center. But again, every single string will be the full U-N-I-T-Y molded, so...
Yeah, I think what was brought up earlier is going to be very important to have a descriptive plaque or something that explains it, because I think it's really beautiful in the concept, tying in the sign language as well as the artwork, but if somebody doesn't understand the message, it'll get lost.
So I assume there would be a plaque on the wall with, that had an art statement, like in an art exhibit. And every project I've seen for other cities, for example, would have a plaque, and it would literally say the title and then a description. So I don't know, it would be placed on a wall under the space.
Yeah, perfect. And like in the staff report, the picture of, you have in there is a picture of it, the hands hanging in unity, like spelled out.
Yeah, and I could do, so you could have a, literally in the text, you could have a photo, you know, similar to this, hanging of one string.
Right.
So they could see that. I could even put a, you know, you could do a mount on the wall and a hook.
Yep.
And you could have, just so the, you know, the community could touch and see one up close, I could have a string next to the art statement. So then at least maybe they'd connect even more. They'd see the unity, they'd look up, and they'd get it.
Even better, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess the idea was, so that's an atrium, there's a lot of light, there're doors on both sides, so I wanted to do a piece that was, you know, optical in nature, so, you know, mostly transparent, interacted with the light, and that was, you know, hollow. So it really will interact with the seasonal light, and again, multicultural, unity, the globe, symbols of sign language, universal language, and sustainable. So again, the lighting for this will be, I'd already worked on some of the lighting design. There'll be lighting mounted in the ceiling over the art piece, and one option that's very popular now for buildings is using color-changing bulbs. So for example, I'm not sure if people have in their houses those Hue light bulbs. So literally, you could change throughout the day, you can change the color of the art with a, you know, phone app, a, whatever your master electronics are. So there would be bulbs mounted in the ceiling, and then again, every five to eight years, you'd need to change the bulbs, and that's assuming they run 24 hours a day, so. So I've done, started doing the lighting design. Again, there'll have to be, there'll be a metal structure that gets bolted into the ceiling, so obviously I have to consult structural engineer, mechanical engineer, get permits, consult with your city architect, and then that structure will be mounted in the ceiling, and then the art piece will be hung off that. And again, this is another rendering, so you can kind of see how it fits in the space, and another rendering, so you can see it with the globe in the inside. Any questions?
I love it.
Very cool.
Very creative.
Very creative.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gordon Huthar. Is that pronounced right?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. My name's Gordon Huthar. I live in Napa, on the other side of the mountains, from Peter.
Hopefully you weren't, hopefully your home survived everything up there.
All our staff, everybody's safe, but we were in the evacuation zone, and I have a lot of friends that, like Peter, lost everything, basically, so it's been a very trying couple of weeks, doing a lot of crisis management counseling, which is not my specialty, but I've gotten pretty good at it, and I'd like to offer Peter my studio, if you want to come and build your sculpture there, assuming it gets approved. We have a pretty nice studio. I'm not sure, do you want me to go through a whole presentation, or did you want to just ask me some questions? I want to be respectful of your time.
Why don't you show us what you've got to offer?
That I would need somebody to pull it up. Thank you. Ah, Mr. Bidwell, I take it.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. Couple of comments while it's getting set up. So the water feature, that was not part of my proposal. I think it's a lovely idea. I've been around this for over 30 years, and I don't want to second-guess staff, but I think if you already have construction and contractors out there, we can work with them and leverage the construction budget that they're already using. We can do the engineering, structural engineering on a parallel track, so I don't think it has to be that much. I think the sculpture can be successful without it, but I thought the committee made some really good points about having that extra dynamic, so when the light's hitting the water, it will shimmer up onto the sculpture and make it even more dynamic. If that's too big of a pill to swallow, we could also suggest some landscaping around it. We don't have enough information yet to know what the context of the space is. So just very briefly, as I shared with you, I'm in Napa, and that's our studio that 10 days ago, it was literally orange and red all the way around it. We were all evacuated, it was very scary, so the idea of losing your life's work is just, and we just know so many people that, I don't know, it's so random, why were we spared and somebody else wasn't? That's not what this is about, but it's, like I said, it's been a little traumatic. So my whole thing is to inspire humanity by bringing beauty and meaning into the world through the art that I do, and I'm doing it all over the country, have been for a really long time. We've probably done at least 75 public art awards, a couple 100 private commissions... commissions, if I have a full staff behind me, I think would be most interesting and most important, relevant to you, is that we have a full-time project manager that really makes sure that things stay on time, on schedule, the whole nuts and bolts of it, and the logistics of that, and we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to help with that whole contracting, I don't want to over-set my bounds, but I think you guys can handle it, you did such a great job with the RFP, it was just very, very thorough and articulate, and I've gone through hundreds of them, and I'm happy to help, if, I do a lot of consulting on public art across the country as well, just throwing that out there. So I want to skip all of this, so I just really want to get to the sculpture, so the whole idea was, we want something that projects our civic pride, that's an iconic piece, that is nowhere else to be found, and this is that, and it's also to be kinetic in some way, I'm going to call it passively kinetic, so I don't know if you know what a moray pattern is, so when you just barely tilt your head, this thing dances, just because of the, the patterning, and you're looking through it to the other side, it's lit from within, it won't be still like that, so it will just gently go from one color to another, and there's literally hundreds, if not thousands, of color combinations we can do, so you can program it for different seasons and events and that sort of thing. And then, yes, we were asked, I think yesterday, to what would it look like with a fountain, or as a reflecting pool, I would probably, if we're going to do that, I would probably have that to be a bigger footprint, so that it's a little bit, well, a bigger footprint, basically, so there, there's more room to sit around it, and leave some space between the sculpture and the, and the curb. Also, it will definitely, if you'll notice, the patterned colored light on the adjacent surface, on the ground, that most definitely will happen, so the art goes far beyond just the sculpture itself. Let's see, motion, so we had, this, this is actually the same presentation that I did with the committee, and so we talked about motion sensors and a light dial, and honestly, cellphone interface and all that, I basically, in a touchscreen, I talked him out of all of that stuff. That's just going to be a maintenance thing down the road that you really don't want to deal with, I think if we just give you a dozen different programs for how it interacts, or the different color combinations, I think that's plenty, in terms of being interactive, and the, and the committee eventually agreed, and that's kind of how we went over into the water, the, into the water conversation. So the, the climbability, it's, it's not really there, but to make everyone feel better, we said we push the, those tubes a little bit closer together, so little fingers and toes can't get in there, and if you do landscaping around it, if you do a reflecting pool around it, it wouldn't be, it won't be an issue in any event. There could be some refinements, I think it's really good to go the way that it is, I think it's super awesome, so that's just my opinion. So crazy is, so we're doing this absolutely enormous airport in Salt Lake City, it's two football fields in length, and 30 feet tall on two walls, et cetera, et cetera, and a special machine was designed to be able to push a straight tube in one end, and it comes out whatever shape that you've digitally programmed it to do, to make these fins that you can see in the bottom left corner, and so we're able to leverage that technology now, that no one else has, it was designed just for this, so that design that I have, that we came up with, there's no way to make that, there's no other way to make that, except with this technology, so we're really right out on the edge of technology with that, so we're very excited about that opportunity. Landscaping is going to be really important, so I'm not a landscape architect, but again, I've been doing this my whole adult life, and actually even before that, my teenage years I started, so I'm very comfortable with landscaping, I'm very comfortable collaborating with your design team if you would like, or we'll just install the sculpture and leave, but whatever you would like, but I'm prepared to engage on that level. The bottom right is Sacramento, that is the water treatment headquarters, or water, water district headquarters, and you see there's a, it's a round shape, so that's landscapes, not with water, but with different tiers coming up, so we could do that as well, so we can get more height out of it if we wanted to. Just wanted to throw that out there, that I'm available to include that in my artist's scope. There was a, I don't remember why they were asking about that, you can, oh, about not touching and that sort of thing, so I, I really don't think that it's a problem, we've never had a problem with any of our installations. I think it's always nice to put a narrative, talk with the previous artists about having a narrative, so people like to, first, we want to give people the intellectual freedom to interpret it for what they're seeing, and then it's always interesting to walk over and say, oh, this is what the artist statement is, and this is what they were thinking about. So we, that would be included in our scope. Yeah, that's, everything can be climbed, it never happens. Okay, so this is, again, so that's the end of that, so I try to be as, as, as brief as possible, and I'm happy to take any questions.
So from your artist's perspective, what do, what would you think complement this better, the reflecting pond or landscape?
Well, if I say water, you're going to be thinking, well, that guy's costing me a hundred grand, I don't want you to think that, so that's, water's beautiful, so, and I'd love to, and the water would be agitated, in other words, we make it move a little bit, and soon as it's moving, and if we have lights in there, then light and water, they're just so beautiful together, they're almost sometimes the same thing, so if we agitate the water, we're throwing some light on it, it's going to play on the surfaces of the, of the sculpture, and I don't, again, I, since I don't have the landscape plans, I haven't seen anything, so I don't know the context, but I don't think it's just one, I think we would have sculpture, water, landscaping, hardscaping, so, but I'm, again, I'm happy to help with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
By the way, congratulations, this, you guys, this community, so engaged, and so on fire, I'm sure you guys love that you have to stay up so late sometimes, because everybody's so, so into it, but, you know, Napa's only got 75,000 people, and it really doesn't get ever this full, unless everybody's mad about something, but.
That's usually the case here.
Yeah. Well, I serve on the planning commission, I have for like 12, 14 years, and, you know, we're just blowing up these days, and so, you know, more hotels, that's a monstrosity, all that kind of stuff, so anyways, I really appreciate the opportunity, I'm really excited to be able to work with Elk Grove.
Thank you, we really appreciate your engagement in this.
Thank you.
You know, I'm going to ask the gentleman, I feel that he got short of it, came all the way from here, from Arizona, if you, if, if you want to come up here and put your stuff up on the screen and talk about it a little bit. Nathan, can you help him?
Good, good call, Vice Mayor.
Well, I mean, just to keep it in perspective, I've kind of have a philosophy, when I go places, I try to have the time it takes me to get there, at least equal or exceed what the time of the event is, so if you're only going to be up here for a couple of minutes, Arizona's a long, long way to come from.
Yeah, public speaking's not my thing, but this, I'm, I'm going to be creating out of a 10-gauge steel, each, each of the facets will be measured through SolidWorks.
Even better.
I, I volunteer with the University of Arizona, and they've allowed me permission to work with the professors, and manage, get help from students as well, so it'd be a beneficial project for me and also the students to get work, work on public artwork. So, and I'm going to finish it with the electrostatic painting, color is still to be determined. Yes. Any other questions?
I'll make it easy on you, I'll ask you some questions, that way you can just respond here. Will the figurines be angular like this depicted, or is that a, an aspect of the computer programming?
It will be angular like this, it'll be a faceted form.
Well, there's, there's only going to be one figure.
Correct.
Oh, this is four views of one figure?
Yes, yes.
Because that was going to be my next question, is were they going to be in a line or in a circle, but, okay, it's just the one figure, great.
Stand alone.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, really, thank you for taking the trip, I mean, obviously, for coming from Napa and some of the other areas, it's a, it's a little bit of a jaunt over here, but not like Arizona.
It's good, it's good, I'm excited.
We are too, thank you.
Great, does anybody in the audience have any questions, or want to keep him up here for a little longer?
I'll bet you for a hundred thousand dollars you can build a pond.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker is Liz Irons.
Good evening. As a member of the Art Committee, I want to tell you how excited I am about this, because I also went to the meeting on Monday, and I'm just thinking, gee, this is where we're going to end up, we're going to be unified, we're, this is what we will be, so I'm really jazzed up about that, and Councilman Soon, to answer your question of why Grapes of Wrath was chosen, it's a California author, John Steinbeck, it also, it's symbolism of immigrating to California for a better life, we want Elk Grove to be a better place, it also has themes of unity and race relations, so we thought that it's, it's a great thing, this is where we want to be.
That is so great, I honestly don't remember reading it in high school, so I don't remember what Grapes of Wrath was about, so I wanted to understand, I know there was some meaning, and really, I was, I was wondering because of when, we, we heard a lot about the history taught in the schools here, and that, that there wasn't, you know, to some of the students, it didn't seem to be a reflection, so that's why I was kind of wondering, you know, if, what that would, you know, how that would impress upon some people.
It's a classic, and...
I love that, I know it's a classic, I do, I'm just, high school's a long time ago.
So I don't believe we have to pay for the title?
Yeah, that's what I heard, I understood.
Because it's after so many years.
So I assume the excerpt that you, we were looking to have inserted was something about immigration, or within the book, I don't...
Well, just, Grapes of Wrath, it's like, it's the promised land, it's, well, you can't really say that, because that's too religious, I suppose, but if you can, if we can have something, they go and read, well, what's this Grapes of Wrath, okay, let's read it, oh, you know, think about the time when it was written, and the time it takes place, in the 30s, when WPA was going on and having all these programs, and it was the Brotherhood of Man for sexist terminology, so people got together, and that's what Elk Grove wants to be, I'm so excited about this project, and we worked very hard to pick out what's going to be here after I'm gone, and where are we going to be, so please consider all of them, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Don't feel bad, Councilmember Soon, I've had the story of Of Mice and Men in my head this whole time, so I'm glad you asked a question.
Well, I remember Death of a Salesman, you know, but Grapes of Wrath, I don't remember.
Okay, our last speaker is Randy Becker.
Well, somebody's got to be the spoiler, just curious, this is nice, wasn't planning on speaking on this, but as it came up, and I sit here, I had to wonder, it reminded me of probably all of us going through the model of buying our home, all these things are very beautiful to, to look at, and respective to the artist, my comment is, can we afford it, one?
Yeah, we, we allocated funds specifically for this.
And, and is there any reason we need to buy all of it at once, meaning, I understand the interior stuff, but some of the exterior stuff, is that something that can be put off for a year, two years, as we build?
Well, it's, this is, this is doing the artwork for, for this phase of the Civic Center.
Okay.
So you, so this will be directly across from the Aquatic Center, it's under construction now, then they'll start...
This fall?
Is, are we starting with?
Spring.
What's that?
Spring.
So spring will be starting the construction, so while they're building these things, we're going to be building and doing the paving, and getting all the infrastructure in that'll also service these.
Okay, my last comment is, is have we taken any, through this process, and forgive me, because I've not been part of it, so if it's been covered, that's good, but have we given any thought about the high school talent, college talent locally, of presenting their stuff within the building, as far as just showcasing it, something like they do at County Fair, is that something we looked at, or something we thought about?
I don't believe, I don't believe we've had that as...
I can respond to that, we are integrating within the design of the community center some places for exhibits of artwork, so there's going to be some hanging places along some of the corridors and things that can be rotated through schools and things, yes, that is being integrated into the design.
I think that would also bring the community involved in, in our center, to bring young talent into, into the arts.
I agree, it's good, great, great point, and I look forward to having that.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy was our last speaker, so we'll close public comment, and we'll go to council deliberation under direction.
So I, I think you heard my reactions tonight, I, I really thought all these pieces were very creative, and I think it's, it's a great start, again, for us to move forward as a community that defines, better defines, I think, our community, having these pieces of art here. After hearing Liz Iron's statement about why the Grapes of Wrath, that makes a lot much more, a lot more sense, but I would encourage then definitely a, a artist's statement on that piece, I'm sure we'll do them for all, but I want to emphasize that piece, because I think people interpret literature their own way too, so I think we want to explain what the intent is, I'm putting, if we choose to engrave that, that title, which I'm okay with, so I would move forward with staff recommendation.
Okay, we have, there's a motion, do we have any more deliberation, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and second the motion, I just want to kind of, Mr. Becker's point, is that, you know, I think the city made a determination that in public projects, over a certain amount, we would dedicate a percentage of that amount towards public art pieces, and then we've also put in place an incentive program for private projects to receive credits or offsets if they provide public art, so the idea being is that we are trying to, to increase the amount of public art throughout the city, because we think it's important, and I think that the sculptures, various sculptures and murals and things that have been presented here today, captured what we were hoping to achieve with that, I look forward to seeing them come to fruition, and I want to thank the Arts Commission for the job that they did in, in sifting through the proposals, I think you made some excellent choices.
Yeah.
I, you know, I do have a comment, and this is for Mr. Bagwell, you had mentioned that SMAC might be a direction in which you're going to have them come in and maybe do some consulting work, because I, I do know it is a lot of work, and I do know SMAC, and they are fully funded to have staff, and this is what they do all day, and so they're, they're experts in this, and I commend you and the Arts Commission for being a part of this, but I do want to also hear of the Arts Commission, would, is that something they're interested in as well too, or do they want to keep it with the city and with the Arts Commission in moving forward?
Well, we have discussed it as, as, as a, as a commission, last time we met, I'll have to get used to using that word now with our meetings, it was received favorably, however, I do want to add the caveat that we had, we only had three members that night, we had one that was out of the country, and one that was unfortunately not feeling well, so that is something that, you know, we have our regular meeting every month, we can, we can circle back on that, and again, it's, it's a running conversation right now with the Municipal Artists Commission, and it certainly isn't a sure thing that they, they have the capacity to do so right now, that's part of the conversation, so it's developing, and we will certainly circle back with our community, or committee, commission, and, and get their preference on that as well.
Right, thank you.
So two things, Mr. Huether's piece is the biggest price tag, he said he has the capacity to manage the project himself, so I would hate to see us pay 15 to 8% for someone else to manage him when he says he's, has a better job of doing it in-house, so much so that he's offering up assistance of managing the other projects, so that'd be item number one, item number two, I do support adding the reflecting pool, but not at a price tag of a hundred thousand dollars, that's just ridiculous, I, I am almost certain it can be done for a fraction of that.
I think our Arizona artist said he could do it.
As long as he doesn't have to talk about it, I think, yeah, he's, he's on board.
So question, Councilman Heem, that, because I understand this is a budget, so I think it can be done for less as well, but are we just, we're talking about adding the budget to accommodate something for if we were going to entertain that reflection pool, would you be comfortable maybe just lowering that budget?
No, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not objecting to the motion as it was put forward.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying that staff needs to sharpen the pencil on that deal.
I, I agree, thank you, yep.
I agree 100% on the budget, you know, want to thank all the artists that came near and far, and obviously that the Arts Commission.
Yeah.
All the, all your work on this. And Randy, just to give you a little background, since you haven't been here related to this item, we've done a survey, and art was one of the top items that the residents of Elk Grove on our citywide survey, that they felt, you know, we just don't have enough art. And because art brings people together for different reasons, whether it's for gathering, for looking at the artistic value, there's so many different reasons, and some of it is, I believe, is therapeutic. So that's some of the background, and why we were so strongly, as Councilmember Hume mentioned, allocating a percentage of all of our public projects so that we could have money to be able to fund this type of works, as well as the incentive for the private sector on what they're doing. So I support this whole heartily as well. We already have a first and a second, but we all wanted to kind of pipe in, because, I mean, you guys, you guys work hard at what you do, and you put a lot of time and a lot of effort into it, and we need to be able to recognize, you know, every, you know, our staff, the committee, the commission, and then all the artists. Because obviously, you guys do all this at a gamble. If we say thumbs down, you guys are done. But it looks like we got thumbs up to go, and I agree with all the comments relative to the, the reflection pond as well. I think capitalizing with the existing pool builders we have doing the Aquatic Center, we got to get on this sooner than later, though, to incorporate that. And I agree, there's this, I know this was thrown together really quickly, there's got to be a scale of magnitude for the size of your sculpture, what is going to make the most sense, and to incorporate some of your ideas with having movement of the water and those type of things. I think this could be one of those items that people come from all around to come see, as well as the other pieces of art. So we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, ascension, none? 4-0, congratulations.
And Mr. Lippman, best wishes to you as you rebuild. I'm sorry for your loss.
Yep.
Next item will be item 10.2, which is receive information, consider proposed locations and type of art for the Elk Grove Animal Shelter.
So while we're on the topic of art, this item is considering the animal shelter of public art. So just to kind of phrase it, so this is really square one for this particular process. So as a reminder, we have the percent for the arts that allocates budget for art and for this particular project. The recommendation is to approve the proposed locations and type of artworks as recommended by the Commission for the Arts, and authorize the city manager to issue an RFP for proposals. We've already discussed the percent for the art program. The allocation for this particular project is $218,936. And this is the proposed breakdown, the summary and locations of the art as recommended by the commission. They are recommending an exterior A to be near the, the public animal shelter main lobby. It's proposed to be a large outdoor illuminated abstract sculpture with a budget of $110,000. There are two proposed interior pieces. One would be a large mural, it would be an abstract mural behind the reception desk in the animal shelter with a proposed budget of $66,000. And lastly, in the interior C would be a continuous piece along the adoption corridor. I did provide council with a, this map as well, just to kind of give you a reference as we look through the, just to give you kind of a comparison here, what I'm talking about, where, for these particular pieces, the last, the continuous piece is the sequence wall piece. It's $42,936, the remaining budget for this particular project. So just to give you some context as to where these would be located, the large exterior structure is the exterior A, the mural is interior B, that's the main, main lobby for the animal shelter, and the interior C is that, those red boxes with the red arrow pointing to it over here, that indicate the continuous piece along the adoption corridor. So with council's approval, the next steps would be to draft and release a request for proposals. We would then be, again, establishing a selection committee to review the proposals and make recommendations, as we did this evening for Civic Center, and then come back to council for review and approval prior to award of contract. So with that said, the recommended action is that city council consider the locations and type of art for the shelter, approving the proposed locations and type of artworks as recommended by the City's Commission for the Arts, and authorize city manager to issue, city manager to issue a request for proposals. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Nathan. To whom should I address a question regarding the description of the type of artwork? To you, or should I ask a commission member?
We have our, some of our commissioners as well.
So I'm just curious as to why for exterior A and interior B, we're calling for an abstract?
The theme is not necessarily defined. We met with a consultant who worked, who's been working with the animal shelter and got their inputs as to what is, what they would recommend. It's animal friendly, that is the kind of art they've seen at other civic animal shelters around. So frankly, I think that it is, it's kind of nondescript. I don't think it has to be, I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily a primary identifier. Would anyone care to weigh in on why the word abstract is...
I can. Come on up? Yeah.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council, Alvin Wong with Willdan. I think in one of the meetings, one of our animal shelter consultant had described that animals freak out when they see something that looks like another animal, but it's still. So it was important that any art that represents an animal be somewhat abstract or maybe two-dimensional, so that it doesn't look realistic and scare the animals.
Okay, that's a better answer than I was expecting. Thank you.
(laughter) Vice Mayor. So I'm, I'm curious about the budgets, when, you know, as I consider the, you know, behind the desk, animal shelter, on the wall, behind that reception desk, and I look at a budget of $66,000, and I look at our hallway of the community center being a budget of $25,000, and seeing what the proposed piece there, I just wonder if, can we receive more value, you know, for a lesser price and maybe allocate it towards a, maybe a, you know, more robust exterior piece, or maybe even a fourth piece? Was that, what's, what's the reason why such a high, high piece for the, behind the reception desk?
Sure. Well, excellent point. They were cross-referencing their experience with the Civic Center. I think the, the input was that they wanted to get something a little bigger than what they were looking to get, what they were going out for, for the mural at the Civic Center, hence the price. They were, I think they were looking to do something substantially bigger, like three times the size, or at least double the size, ergo the $66,000. It is truly council's jurisdiction if you want to add pieces, reduce pieces, or change budget. Again, these are, these are recommendations, but you do have final say.
How big, because if I remember the, the exhibit for the, the animal shelter, the reception desk isn't that big.
I think, I think it was the whole wall behind it, though, from what I remembered. In fact, I think, Alvin, I think we had that discussion, because they had huge, detailed animals, and I even brought up, I go, are the animals going to have an issue? I mean, if I, if I'm a small animal, and you walk in and there's this 20-foot dog sitting there, it might scare the heck out of the dog.
And that's the abstract. All right.
Well, that's why, yeah, that's why they're going with the abstract. But if I recall, do you remember what the dimensions were on that?
I'm sorry, I actually wasn't part of that meeting. It was a different architect.
Okay.
At, at the time, the project manager.
Sorry.
I do recall what you're talking about, but I didn't know that, you know, that was specific to, that was an example, but I don't know if it was this one. So, so the bottom line is, I mean, what I'm hearing is the Art Commission is, is thinking this is going to be a pretty large piece behind the desk and worth the $66,000. Okay, I see heads nodding.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I think that's it. Okay, so we'll open public comment. And we'll close public comment, since we don't have anybody signed up to speak, and we'll go to council deliberation and direction.
So I'll move the item for the city manager, release the request for proposals, but I would say to the members of the commission that are here, that even though it needs to be abstract, so as not to be off-putting to the, the animals that'll be serviced there, I would still think there's a wealth of subject matter within the animal kingdom that we can pull from, and so I'd like to see that happen.
Second.
I agree. Second? Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, abstentions, none? 4-0? Congratulations.
And that'll be to receive a report on the multimodal facility feasibility study and provide direction as appropriate.
Well, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Mike Costa, interim Transit System Manager. Just wanted to provide an update to the city council regarding our current multimodal feasibility study. This item is for council's input and direction tonight. It is not any recommended action that staff is presenting. It'll also allow additional public comment for this item. Some of the background regarding this multimodal feasibility study and where it came from and where we're at today, we did receive a grant, a federal funding grant through the California Department of Transportation, passed through them, also through Sacramento Area Council of Governments, which we are utilizing for this feasibility study. We executed a contract, this was received back in April of 2015, and we executed a contract to proceed with the study in April of 2017. Some of the study's primary goals, as identified in our scope of work, was to identify a location for a possible multimodal connection to either existing or future passenger rail service, also to look at whether or not a multimodal facility would have impacts on reducing traffic and congestion in the city, as well as looking at opportunities that are currently available for grant funding or site locations that a multimodal facility could be located at that could help us with future planning efforts. The process is taking, right now, we're in about month five of our current process. As I said, we, we did start the process in May, June. We are looking at, again, site locations for multimodal facility, also looking at identifying specifics of how that multimodal facility would impact the community related to ridership, congestion relief. We are also in the process of, or we have engaged the public in terms of identifying what some of the concerns are regarding multimodal facilities in our city, as well as the potential locations that we've identified. And then, of course, we do have at this point some preliminary sites that we are identifying as potential locations for a multimodal facility here in the city. I'd like to acknowledge some of the agencies that we've been working with. One of our primary stakeholders in this situation, of course, is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, who we received the funding through, as well as the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority that currently operates Amtrak service that runs through the city, and I'm going to go into a little further detail about that. But we've been working very closely with them to kind of identify if we were to have a connection to heavy rail, what would that look like and where could that be, as well as Sacramento Regional Transit, which operates the nearby light rail facilities at Casunas River College, and what's the potential for potentially locating a multimodal facility on a future extension of that service into Elk Grove. One of the important aspects, as I mentioned before, of the multimodal facility is its service connectivity to rail, whether that be heavy rail or light rail. This study is looking at both options, connecting to either light rail or heavy rail. And that essentially provides many opportunities for the city regarding connectivity to the region, connectivity to the state, different areas in the state, such as the Bay Area or down south, as well as even connectivity outside of the state if you're using heavy rail Amtrak services. This study is, again, looking at what it's going to take to develop a site, how, how big we're looking at, what are the costs associated with that, what kind of opportunities there are in terms of funding, and where can we build a site in our city. To give a little bit of background of some of the opportunities that exist around us regarding light rail, we do have Sacramento Regional Transit District's light rail service located immediately north of our city. Just recently, in September of 2015, they opened up the Blue Line Extension to Casunas River College. That line does not enter our city currently, but there is potential for it to extend down into the city in the future. Staff does have a kind of preliminary rough estimate cost of what that would entail to extend down to a site, say, such as the Civic Center. But again, at this time, there is no planning or no funding opportunities that have been identified to determine exactly how long it would take to extend that down into the city, as well as how long it would take to construct and get funding for. In terms of heavy rail connections, there are two, as you can see in the figure before you, there are two lines, Union Pacific lines that run through the city. Both currently are heavily frail oriented, excuse me, freight-oriented lines, that we do have some passenger service that runs through our city on the eastern line, which is known as the Fresno subdivision. Currently, that's operated by the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority through their Amtrak service. And we do have a western line that runs through the city that currently is dedicated to freight only. In terms of what the future is for those two heavy rail lines, on the east side line, staff has been working very closely with the Joint Powers Authority, which recently determined that future planning efforts are actually going to be focusing more passenger rail service, potentially on the west side line, which is the SAC subdivision line, as there are certain capacity issues with the east side line, primarily due to the fact that Union Pacific runs a lot of their heavy freight on the east side line and wants to continue to utilize that line for freight only. There is, again, an existing passenger service on the east side line. However, in terms of expansion of that service, it is unknown. It's, it seems unlikely at this point, to the point where the JPA has shifted kind of their future planning efforts to that west side line, due to the fact that it is open for potential more passenger rail service at this time. Some of the site requirements, I'm not going to go through all of them, but some of the primary site components and requirements that we looked at for the multimodal feasibility study was size of a parcel. We're looking at roughly five to 10 acres, looking at a site that is relatively undeveloped and located within the city's limits, or at least immediately adjacent to the city limits, and also something that has connectivity, again, to existing or future planned rail networks. One of the, one of the things to note here is that you can see, actually, in this slide, assortment of locations, 13 to be exact, that were looked at throughout the city, using some of that criteria that was identified on the previous slide. And you can see that there were some that were located outside of the city limits, there were some that were located on each of the heavy rail lines on the east and west sides of the city, as well as potential opportunities for connections to light rail down the middle of the city. Of those 13 sites, again, we looked at some additional criteria that helped us narrow down our evaluation efforts. The primary criteria, again, being within the city limits, that would allow us to have jurisdiction over site locations and site planning, as well as the ability to develop the site at a potentially minimal cost comparative to other sites, and looking at, again, opportunities that exist today for potential grant funding on some of those locations. From our sites, 13 sites, we did narrow it down to four candidate sites that would be considered potential connections based on those criteria identified in the previous slide. Site one and two are located on the west side, or the SAC subdivision line, located south of Elk Grove Boulevard, kind of along the Franklin Boulevard corridor. Site three, located in the central part, would be a connection to a future light rail extension into the city of Elk Grove. It would have no connection to heavy rail. And site four would have connections to the existing passenger rail service on the east side line, known as the Fresno subdivision line. Some of the outreach that was conducted for this study between June and now, we held two open houses. We did have some, we had a good attendance in both of those open houses. We did conduct concurrent open online forums to provide for community input, as well as we did bring council an update on this item in August. And of that, we've received a total of actually 175 comments to date, including the ones that were received after the staff report was published. Some of the outreach methodology that we used, again, to go out to the community was our city's newsletter, our web pages, notification at our city council meetings, articles that were published, actually, in our own local newspaper, social media, and we did attempt to contact the neighboring homeowner association and neighborhood associations of the four sites that we identified from the list of 13. Now, keep in mind, we were able to contact as... Now, keep in mind, we were able to contact as many of those homeowner associations and neighborhood associations that we had contact information for, and it was about a third of our city's 30 homeowners associations and neighborhood associations that we were able to pull solid contact information for. Summary of some of the comments that we received regarding the sites, we did receive comments on site one, which again is the site located south on the west line, which is located kind of near the Willard Parkway Franklin area. That site, some of the comments we received were regarding to concerns about nuisances that this could create, such as crime, not being in a centralized location, some nuisances related to home values being depreciated and traffic and noise. Site two, one of the primary concerns that was received on that site was its location, the fact that it was in the National Wildlife Refuge or Stone Lake's National Wildlife Refuge, and the impacts to that refuge if we were to develop on that site. Site three is the option that is off heavy rail, it's located near the Civic Center. It was positively received as a centralized location with access to potential light rail services if they were to extend down into the city. And then site four received some comments regarding its location closer to 99 and the ability for it to be capturing some of that traffic from 99, which is heavily utilized for morning commute and afternoon commutes. And now I'm going to go ahead and introduce Kevin, who's going to explain some of the preliminary study results.
Kevin Bucy, Senior Civil Engineer, Capital Improvement Program, Division of Public Works. We have six results that we want to discuss with you guys and get comments on. The first being that the study would recommend both a multimodal facility on both types of rail service, one for both light rail and for heavy rail. Site three would be recommended as the site for the multimodal facility for light rail. And then we essentially get to a point where we have to pick which rail line to put the multimodal site, based on the east line, the east side line, the Fresno subdivision line being limited in the amount of rail service it can provide, and the opportunities associated with the west side line or the Sacramento subdivision line, with the upcoming grant opportunity that Mike talked about, as well as hopefully future agreement with UPRR. That looks like the most likely line for the multimodal site. If that, the grant doesn't come to fruition or the agreement with UPRR doesn't come to fruition, then we would use site four on the east side, the east side line on the Fresno subdivision line, near Grant Line in 99. If we did get the grant, if we did get the grant and UPRR was in agreement, then we would look at sites one and two as the most viable locations for the heavy rail multimodal And then the results of the study, right now we're looking at a cost of 15 to 25 million for the site. With that, Mike's going to come back up real quick and do the final slides.
Actually, Kevin, I have a quick question for you. So, given the current desire to move passenger rail to the west, why would site four remain an alternative with or without the grant?
It would remain an alternative if we were, if we did not get a grant to move it to the west side.
But they're moving, but they're moving, excuse me, they're moving the service, passenger service to the west.
They would like to move the passenger service to the west, they're pursuing a grant to do that, and they would need to also get agreement with UPRR to do that. So that's, and that, we would likely not know about the grant, at least until May of 2018, whether or not they would actually be able to do that. So we kind of, we, so that, site, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so you still anticipate service on the Fresno line? That's what I'm, I understand they're moving it to the west, therefore are they still having service on the Fresno line? Maybe it's sort of been directed at you, Mike, sorry Kevin.
I can go ahead and answer this. To answer your question, yes, service currently exists on the east side line or known as the Fresno subdivision line. Right now, actually, the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority has requested the Union Pacific Railroad to do a study to move service from the east line to the west line. That study is concurrent and should be finished prior to the grant application being submitted for funding of service improvements on one of those two lines. Now, again, the east side presents very limited opportunities for any sort of service expansion at this time. However, the west line does have capacity for that expansion, but it would have to be UPRR that would sign off on the ability for the service to actually transition over. And so site four is recommended only as an alternative should that transition not happen.
Should the transition not happen?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So where we're at tonight, again, is requesting council's input on staff's current evaluation and some of the preliminary results that are identified in this presentation. We anticipate over the next couple of months, finalizing the study, one of the factors that we're waiting on is we know that our partners, the Joint Powers Authority, are working on some of the estimates for ridership, some of the key factors that are going into their grant application, that we are still kind of waiting to identify so that we can have the same numbers that they have essentially, and we can move forward with concurrent results. Again, they are the experts of running the service because they currently run the service. So that is something we are waiting for, and we hope to have that in the next couple of months, at which case we can then bring back the study for council's consideration with those results, and essentially some of those factors that we're looking for, ridership, congestion relief, and that sort of input. And with that, this actually concludes our presentation. Both myself, Kevin, and our project team are available to answer questions.
Any questions?
I have some questions. I actually got several emails from folks that are going to be affected by this change and have said that they did not get enough information about this and that they wanted to have another opportunity for a community meeting to discuss this and voice their comments. Is that something that we can, we can have? Can we have another one just so that we can hear what other comments are? And then I, you know, I noticed that in the summary of the comments that were given, it looks like site number one had a lot of negative, or some, some concerns. And so as you were presenting earlier, site one and two would both be heavy and light rail?
Site one and two actually would only be heavy rail.
So yeah, will there be another opportunity for members of the community to come in and give comments, or I believe there may be some tonight that are here that may do that as well, but would there be an additional opportunity to have folks come in?
One of the things that we are bringing this item before council is to hear comments such as that, as well as to hear some of the comments that we have received and we wanted to address from members of the community when we released this report and after the second open house. We can, at council's discretion and direction, do another open house. This is currently what we have done so far, but yes, it's something that staff can do at the direction of council as well, another meeting.
You know, I know there's members of the community out there, I'd like to hear what they have to say and share.
Was there any review of the land? I mean, partly the problem I have is, I mean, this shows, like in better words, a mile-high view of the city, so you can't see any of the density and how people are affected. Was there anything looked north, over towards the northwest corner of the city where there's some unimproved area out closer to the industrial or commercial?
So I think the, I pulled up the screen of the 13 sites actually that we initially considered. I believe that sites five and six that are identified, I can address those sites and why they were not essentially moved forward in the evaluation down to four. Site five is located outside of the city's jurisdiction, it's actually located in the SAC sewer district property. It was ruled out in terms of an immediate ability to develop, considering the annexation that the city would have to do. Now that's something that can be explored, but it is something that is kind of outside of our control, and we do have a potential funding opportunity to look at construction of a site now.
But so like wildlife refuge has the ability to, I mean, it's got the highest impact on the environment there, and you also have an impact on having to jump through all the hoops of the National Wildlife Refuge. Are you telling me it was SAC subdivision?
Ma'am, can we wait for, finish his presentation, then you can come up during public comment and give your comments, please.
Site six that's identified is actually a developed site, it's a storage facility with retention basin. We looked at the opportunity of potentially redeveloping the storage facility. Preliminary estimates of buying out the entire storage facility would prove costly, as we would have to purchase every individual storage unit almost as if a condominium, buying condominium, as well as develop a retention basin that's part of the city's drainage system. There is one other site that's not identified here that falls between Elk Grove Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard. The site is an existing open space area. That area was actually, it's mitigated wetlands that we have identified in our city, and so currently the feasibility of developing that site and its size was almost too small, we would almost have to buy some adjacent properties around that, was a factor why that didn't even show up on this assessment.
So Mike, I have a few follow-up questions then. One, did you, how far did you engage SAC County Regional Sand on their property on number five? And then, number two, I believe that's US Fish and Wildlife Service's jurisdiction for the refuge, what kind of conversations have you had with them?
So there were some previous discussions, I believe, a couple years ago regarding annexation in the SAC sewer district area. There were some concerns from SAC sewer at that time regarding the city's request for annexation. It was for a different use at that time, as well as concerns with proximity to potentially hazardous materials that land around SAC sewer is used almost as mitigation property to prevent things like chlorine gases or anything that could affect resonance in that area. That is one of the things that were identified in the past. We did not actively engage SAC sewer as part of these discussions because of those historical kind of findings at that time. In terms of site two, looking at the National Wildlife Refuge, we did directly engage them in conversation regarding the potential to develop that land, and there was significant concern regarding the ability to mitigate the property if we were to develop on-site, as well as disruption to the continuity of all of the land that the wildlife refuge had within the city of Elk Grove, as well as in the outer limits of Elk Grove. And if we were to develop on that site and look at mitigation properties, it didn't quite work with what the National Wildlife Refuge was looking for, because they have pretty much undeveloped land already within their purview. So mitigating that would be a challenge. And the timeframe for that and the cost is unknown at this time as well. So those were kind of the two things that we did look at from a high level. Again, the opportunity for funding is something that was considered highly as well in this feasibility study, and that opportunity lies with the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority that is currently in the process of submitting an application for cap and trade funding that could develop stations here within the city of Elk Grove at a site that we would work collaboratively to identify with. Part of that would be a site that is readily available to construct with no essential construction already on it, as well as something that can be moved forward in a tighter timeframe. And that's something essentially that the JPA is working on as we speak. Again, it would be a collaborative effort.
And then how about eight and one, when you say ease of development, what, why is eight excluded and one is still in there?
So eight is located outside of our city limits, it's located in the Franklin community, so that site was ruled out primarily because of its being outside of our city limits, so we couldn't quite control if that site were developed. It could still be developed by another entity, but not necessarily us unless we annex the property. Site nine is similar, it's south of Camera Road or the future extension of Camera Road, also located on land that is under Williamson Act protection. So that's something that we did look at as well, but again, in terms of the timeframe to develop that site, there were other options that could potentially be looked at as being more available for development at this time within our city's limits.
So nines and Williamson Act?
That's what our preliminary studies found when we looked at those properties, as well as it's outside of our city's jurisdiction currently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I apologize, is there one that you, that came as the highly, most highly recommended, or was that the ranking one, two?
So in terms of the minimal impact, looking at the criteria in terms of cost, looking at the criteria of available land, looking at the criteria of the least amount of environmental constraints, there was a site that stood out preliminarily when we went out to the open houses, and that was actually identified here as site one. However, we did receive some concerns in our second open house from the members of the community around that site regarding potential on-site disruptions and nuisances that would be potentially presented with the development of that site.
It's like the two's less impactful, at least to the, being to the west side of Franklin and totally undeveloped on at least that side.
But it's in the refuge, it's US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Two is located in the wildlife refuge.
So who owns one?
Site one is owned by a private developer. It would actually encompass, since we're looking at five to 10 acres, it would encompass two property owners. One is a private developer, a church community, and the other is a private landowner.
How about site three? Sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
How about site three? Looks like that was, oh yeah, that's right.
Site three is a Civic Center location, and that is off heavy rail component.
So there's nothing there either? Have you spoken with the county, is eight, I know it's outside of our city, but have, there's no reason why we couldn't coordinate with the county, or that's the town of Franklin, is that what you said?
The community, unincorporated community of Franklin, yes. And we have not actively engaged the county for that site, based on kind of our high-level analysis that we looked at regarding cost, timeline for development, as well as potential grant funding opportunities. It doesn't mean that that site can't be developed by the county, but then it would be potentially outside of our control and jurisdiction.
Right. Unless we had maybe an agreement or something to jointly operate. Is that a private owner also in eight?
I believe so, yes.
So if I can interject here as our representative on RT, and then RT's representative on the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority Board, I can tell you that these sites have been kicked around extensively.
Okay.
And perhaps it might be more productive for us to go ahead and open up public comment. I know Dan Levitt from the Joint Powers Authority is in the audience, and he might be able to elucidate. I'm sorry, you've got several different things in motion right now, the grant application from them, the potential of shifting service over to the west-hand side. I'm working at RT of reprioritizing Blue Line Extension, at least to our city limits, ahead of the Green Line to the airport. That's not a done deal yet, but it's a bite-sized manageable amount of money rather than a billion-dollar potentially project, but that would not get it down into the city, but I know that we have BRT plans, so that there's a, kind of to Mike's point, one of these sites is light rail as part of the multimodal, the other two would be heavy rail as part of the multimodal. I would rule out the Fresno subdivision at this point, because UP has said that under no certain circumstances is any additional service available for sale for, in any way, shape, form. They would allow an additional stop, so if we wanted to build a station, if service did remain there and we wanted to have a stop in Elk Grove, they don't consider that additional service, but right now you're talking about two trains a day, so that's not really getting you any kind of robust connection to a network. So I think we're looking at heavy rail service moving over to the western side, and so the question then would be is, is that important to us that we have that heavy rail connection? If it is, site one has sort of risen to the top as the least constraints. Obviously, there's neighborhood concerns there, but it's a willing seller as far as the actual site. Looking forward, it is fairly accessible to what will be the connector, and so that opens it up to a larger group outside of just the city of Elk Grove. However, and Darren, you could do some research on this, is I believe there are folks over at SECOG that believe if we could work out a deal with the Stone Lake Wildlife Refuge, and maybe even in conjunction with the connector, who's going to have to provide some mitigation and maybe even in conjunction with the connector, who's going to have to provide some mitigation land, and do a land swap where we basically take some acreage out there between the railroad tracks and Franklin Boulevard and add acreage somewhere else. SECOG, for whatever reason, maybe Mike, you can add on this, I don't know why, but they prefer Site Two, I think probably because it's a little more centrally located up towards the city.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, Site Four is pretty much a non-starter. Site Three is if you want to have light rail or bus rapid transit, and then Sites One and Two each have their own concerns.
Yep.
Just for the team's future presentations to us, I'd like to see a much more detailed view, so when we're looking, we can actually see the densities and who's actually being affected. Because this doesn't really, it's very, very difficult to look. I mean, I looked it up on my phone to get a rough idea, but just, you know, and for the audience, as well as people at home, to be able to look at that and have it be part of the staff report.
Will do. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. So if there's no other questions, we'll go into open public comment. And Roberta Low Taylor is our first speaker.
Thank you for getting me out of retirement. This is the first time I had to go back through a 2006 and eight agenda over here, which I used to do ledge over at, worked when I worked for the state thirty-seven and a half years. I'm in the Laguna, Elliott East area. We oppose this air of the light rail, or the standard T, whatever they are now. It's a fact, first of all, the wildlife, we don't want that interruption with our wildlife. Plus the fact of the crime. What I understood in these open houses, which I think Stephanie brought up, is that, first of all, it's not going to really advantage anybody here going to downtown. It's going south. Everything was going south is what they addressed in their open houses. Not for going north, but off-south. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman Hume, because you worked with light rail. And RT was there, and they said they had no plans to come to Elk Grove further than Consumnis. So what was this going to benefit? Us here in Elk Grove, when it's going to southern California, not northern, where we've got now the Amazon, which, you know, people are down looking over there, Amazon in downtown? You know, I just don't understand why we're going to spend this amount of money for a multifunctional, for a rail system that's going to cost 25 million. But what's the advantage to Elk Grove? And what's it going to cause in our taxes? And plus in the police chief's crime area as far as, because you're now going to get all the people from Stockton coming to Sacramento, to Elk Grove. No offense, but I mean, I don't want to be, sound like I'm racial, but I really don't want the Stockton people here in Elk Grove. So where, I mean, they said everything was, you know, northward, southbound, southbound, nothing about north.
There's multiple things we're talking about here. One is the light rail.
Right. And light rail told us knowing that one open house.
Well, that was, how long ago was that open house? Because I know this is something fairly recent.
It is recent.
Fairly recently. Councilman Hume, you know, he's on, sits on the RT board. And they're working at looking this as an option, trying to be, you know, everybody's trying to be a regional player in how we can help our sister cities here in the region. And that's one of the things they're working on, the feasibility, at least bringing it to our northern border from Consumnis down to Sheldon Road, down in that area.
And that, I think it was the September meeting, Liz? Yes, September. RT addressed us at that time and said they had no plans to come further than Consumnis. So I thought, well, what's the, where's the advantage there?
So Roberta, I'd like to answer. So there's two things. First of all, you're correct, the current plan is that way. But as Councilman Hume mentioned, he's working on it through his board. I'm working on it through the SECOG board to readjust that priority. The reason being is because it is lesser amount of money, Councilman Hume already said this, but I'll repeat, that there's a lesser amount of money to extend a mile, mile and a half south to come into the city. You have to go a little farther to get down to the civic center. But also, we don't have all of it, but we have more right-of-way established already than the green line would. We have, our population would provide operational revenue to the system that could then be hooked up and together all go to the airport, because right now you have only Sacramento serving that would go to the airport, right? So there's that. But to your question about heavy rail, the importance of us connecting, it isn't to Stockton, it in fact is to Silicon Valley and the Bay Area for the jobs. So there's a mega-region effort going on at the SECOG level, is connecting the affordable housing in our region to the jobs in the Bay Area and South Bay Area. So if we can get a person there and a worker there in ninety minutes, then it is feasible for people to ride the train and live in this city. That is the primary reason. Those are the studies that have shown, ninety minutes, you're working on the train, and sure, it's not a wasted commute. So that, that's the intent behind it, is why it's so important to be connected to that heavy rail line.
Okay, Councilman Soon, but my understanding is on here is that there's nothing other than maybe two times a day that'll be going down there, which is not going to be...
He was referring to the Fresno line, but the San Joaquin rail system, and Councilman Hume can speak more to this, but the service on that line, the passenger service would move to the west, and they would talk about, actually, we have a gentleman here from San Joaquin to can address that.
Yeah, because I mean, they address two, you know, possible times. So to me, it's just two times. That's not going to help a lot of the commuters.
Yeah, so it's a little confusing, partly because with the different sites, and Dan will speak to this, I'm sure, but partly with the different sites, light rail is only an option at one site, and heavy rail is only an option at the other sites. And so when you're talking about light rail, that would be from here to Sacramento, and that's it. It wouldn't go down south. On the heavy rail sites, the actual goal is, I believe, and Dan can correct me, but I believe it's eight-round trips a day. And then additionally, what we'd like to do is connect with ACE, which is what Darren's referring to, which is the Altamont Commuter Express. The difference being is that the San Joaques are an Amtrak service, and so they're funded largely by the federal government, whereas ACE is more of a pay-for-play scenario that has a more of a local match requirement. And so we would really have to have a ridership that would justify investing into that. But, so, the larger goal then, by moving over to the other subdivision, is that you could essentially connect from Bakersfield via Fresno, via Stockton, via Lodi, via Elk Grove, via downtown Sacramento with two different locations, have a stop at the airport with a shuttle service over to the airport, then on up to Yuba City, Marysville, and potentially all the way as far as Oroville, which would then connect to Chico and Redding via a bus throughway. So you could have the entire valley connected on one network. And then you throw ACE in the mix, and now you curve down to Stockton and shoot out to the South Bay, and you bring in Livermore and San Jose and all of those places. So as Darren says, it's connecting to a much larger network. But the change in service right now on the Fresno subdivision, where we're limited to two trains a day, and we just adopted this within the last month or two, is now people can get on a train in Fresno and make it to Sacramento before or around 8:00 AM, and then come back that same day. So there's a lot of moving parts, and that's why this is a feasibility study and not necessarily any sort of predetermined, you know, fitting the round peg into the square hole kind of a deal, is because we're looking at what the options are and how well any of them might work.
And you will be looking about the Wildlife Refuge, because I'm thinking, what a destruction over there. I love that Wildlife Refuge over there on my side of town.
Yeah.
I like taking the walk over there. I don't want to train them right there, and here comes all the ducks all over me. Oh, and to address something for you for SB one?
Yeah.
There is a rally on November fourth with the petitions, and I will have those petitions to sign, to put it on the ballot to repeal SB one.
Oh, okay.
So contact me at my email.
Thank you.
I left it over there with them.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's being held by the Republican Party, but you see, I said Ellen, but I still do whatever I think is right for the people.
There you go.
You don't need that gas tax. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Next speaker is Harry Kangura? Harry, are you here? Okay, we'll go on to Mike Barnbaum.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Detrick, members of the council, Mike Barnbaum. I head the Ride Downtown 916 Grassroots Organization, and as a frequent rider of the San Joaques and Capitol corridors, I help and assist consulting from a rider's perspective to the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority. One of the things that has been looked at, and quite extensively, as was made in the presentation, are the four sites. And I've taken a very, very hard look at the four of them, at attending both open houses. And I'd recommend to you this evening, a strong yes recommendation on Site Number One. A very hard no on Site Number Two because of its impact to the Stone Lakes Wildlife Refuge. A very strong no on Site Number Four because of the stance taken by the railroads towards the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority of going any more than the existing two-round trips. Site Number One provides the potential of expansion of service, subject to the conclusion of the current negotiations between the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority and the railroads, which you heard the reference of the cap and trade funds that were applied for, and we should get the final results spring 2018. And though I would also highly recommend a strong yes on Number Three, as we heard in the open houses from citizens, that's the forget-the-railroads option. You're not dealing with freight companies with Site Number Three. And so from that, I would say, maintain Site Number One is Number One, but make Site Number Three as the strong option Number Two when you come back for any revisions. If you would want to learn more in-depth about the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority and have an opportunity to attend a meeting, I would strongly encourage the November 17th meeting. It will be from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM in the County Board of Supervisors' chambers in Merced County. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Okay, our next speaker is the representative of San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority. They didn't give me a name, so if you can introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Dan Levitt, manager of Regional Issues, and I represent both San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority and also the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission. So two different rail services, we manage both of them. The Amtrak San Joaquin service, Amtrak operates the service, but we are the managing agency. Our vice chair, Councilmember Hume, has been really great with his time. Thank you so much for all your efforts and your support. And then, in addition, we are the owner-operator of the Altamont Corridor Express service, which is a commuter rail-focused service, which goes from Stockton to San Jose. As has been mentioned, we are looking to expand both of these services. The Amtrak San Joaquin service has served Sacramento for a number of years, but has been stuck with only two daily round trips, as been mentioned. And there's a, our board is very focused for the future of the San Joaques in terms of its growth and development, to be able to increase ridership. Our primary focus is more service to Sacramento. That's where we see the future of the service. The state is really focused on building a statewide high-speed rail network, but it will not get to Sacramento for many, many, many years. And for the time being, the San Joaques are really the way to connect Sacramento to a statewide network. And so that's really the focus of the Amtrak San Joaquin service, is to get more service. We would do that initially with a couple of additional daily round trips. Right now, we only have two. We're looking the next five years to get four, up to four daily round trips, but ultimately in the next ten to fifteen years to be up to hourly service, which is about anywhere from ten to sixteen daily round trips to Sacramento. That would really be the focus of the service. And we believe that this fits really within state rail planning. If there's a recently released state rail plan, and this is the sort of focus for our service that's been identified in the state rail plan, that's really the San Joaques process. Now, we do believe that while we don't have a stop right now in Elk Grove, that there's a tremendous market here for Elk Grove, and not just going south. We do think that it would connect you to the rest of the state, but we believe as well to Sacramento, that we can offer service, we get you from Elk Grove to Sacramento within about twenty minutes. And not only to downtown, but also, as Councilmember Hume mentioned, to the Thomas Station, which would have you a very convenient link to the airport, which we think could be very important for the region as well. So we think that we have an exciting plan, that we would hope that we'd be able to get an Elk Grove station, because we think it could do great things for this city, as well as what the service would do for the whole San Joaquin Valley and for Sacramento region. In addition, on the same line, since there is an opportunity, which, again, we think the option on the west side, the Sacramento side, that we think is unique in the state of California, we're not aware of another existing rail corridor where we have this excess capacity that's there, where a rail provider is willing to work with us to actually offer additional passenger service, is sort of a unique opportunity. And we're looking to not only bring the San Joaquin service along that corridor, but also extend ACE service, and to be able to bring ACE service so that you could connect to the Bay Area as well through ACE service. And so we're working to do both of those through this application. And if my time's up, if you have questions.
Yeah, Dan, so what's your, thank you for coming out here tonight, by the way. What's your timeline for both?
The applications are due January 12th. They're looking to have, the state has a program where they believe they'll have between SB one and cap and trade about two and a half billion dollars over the next five years. That's a statewide program. We'll be competing with other projects throughout California, but we do believe ours will be very competitive for that. Ours also can be incrementally invested in. The key expenditure that we're going to need is to build stations. The track is there. We will need to do a little bit of rehabbing of this track, but it's there and it's already used. We sometimes even run San Joaquin trains on it today, even on it. So the big expense is doing stations, and we have a number of stations that we're looking to implement along the line. But again, we think that it'll be very competitive. We will find out by the spring. We expect to know by April of whether or not we're successful with this. If we succeed, we're looking to have service start around 2020, maybe a little bit later, but we think that 2020 is reasonable to get it started. But again, it would be then growing the service over time, where we're looking to have more trains on it within a ten, fifteen year, you know, sort of hourly service within ten to fifteen years. But initially, within five years, we're looking around six or seven daily round trips between ACE and the San Joaques.
Wow, okay. That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to note, we've been getting really good support up and down the whole central valley, from as far south as Vicksalia and as far north as frankly is Redding, in terms of how this could help connect the whole central valley. And Sacramento, support through members of the legislature and the city are really seeing this as something that could be really good for, in terms of connecting the northern mega-region.
Dan, is this a single track or a double track?
It's a single track. There are some sightings which allow some passings, but it's mostly a single track. The, actually, the main line as well, which we currently operate, is also mainly a single-track railroad, which is, but it's much more heavily trafficked. So you have twenty to forty trains each direction on the Fresno subdivision, where we only have about four to six daily round trips each direction on the Sacramento subdivision. UP doesn't run its mainline freight on the Sacramento subdivision. They push off and have, it's BNSF trains that are running on the Sacramento subdivision. So it's just a few trains a day, which again, lead to this excess capacity, ability to run passenger service on that line.
Okay. And thank you for being here, obviously.
I'm happy to come back another time and give a more detailed presentation, if you're interested, whenever you'd like.
Okay.
I'd like that, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And we look forward, your city's been great to work with, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you.
So next speaker is Stephen Steele, followed by Brenda Fow. Fow. Sorry about that.
Hi, council. Thank you for a few minutes to address you. I actually am the pastor of the church that currently owns the site at Site One that's been identified as the preferred site. And to begin with, for all the public comment that goes on with it, I kind of don't have a horse in the race or a dog in the fight, other than we own the piece of property that is potentially where you might want to locate this site. And we have a unique constraint in that we've already, we've already... And we have a unique constraint in that we've already, we've already pumped a bunch of money into the site, to buy the site, and almost $400,000 in impact fees in order to build the church on our site. That's four reflection pools, for those of you keeping track right now. So we've got a lot of money into it, and unlike regular developers, that comes out of people's pockets. You know, parents that are taking money out of their kids' college fund, and retirees that are taking money out of their retirement in order to give to the church, in order to make that happen. We have an active permit open on that site. We are open to selling, as was indicated, but it leaves us in a little bit of a catch-22, wondering how long and when this will take place. One of the things I might ask of the council is if you could direct staff or give us some help in this particular situation. We have permits that run out on December 31st, that we have been trying to keep open. And so at this moment, we have money in the bank and are ready to put in a sewer connection in order to pull a permit inspection to keep our permits open. But it seems crazy to put a $40,000 sewer connection into a site that you may want someday. So we're hoping to get some help, maybe with the Building Department or the Permits Division, in order to keep those things hanging in limbo as you guys come to your decision. I know these things don't happen fast for you, and you know, I'm here in 2020 here, but we are on the clock, and we're trying to figure out what to do, what's best for our congregation and for our church, and for the community really at large. We've been 15 years on this side of Elk Grove, the west side of Elk Grove, setting up and tearing down every weekend at Franklin High School, out of a trailer. So we love our community, and we love being a church in Elk Grove, and we've got plans to be here long-term, but we could use a little help if we're going to continue to consider that site.
Stephen, have you been in contact with anybody relative to this recently?
Yeah, yeah, I've been at both of the, I've been at both of the open house meetings. City contacted me in advance of this particular, you know, when they identified our site. And I had a call in to Sarah Sandoval this week, and I think it was, is that Kevin? Yeah, Kevin I talked to actually this week, specifically about how it would relate to that. So his suggestion was that I file for another permit extension, which we've had several along the way, as the cost of construction continues to go up. I probably don't need to tell you guys. But if you could maybe help us with some clout to, hey, maybe cut these guys some slack as they hang in the balance, that would be helpful.
I think we need to work together on this. So Kevin, if you can, you know, keep in touch with him and do what, bring it back to us if needed, to see what, you know, how we can work, because if this, if this, moving forward tonight, you'll find out whether this is our preferred site. I'm assuming from what I'm hearing, it may be. And, because obviously, there's no sense, if you guys are a willing seller, and we're coordinating being willing buyers, or maybe no sense you spend any more money you need to, and us either.
That's exactly the point, yeah. And we understand there's community, you know, input from that side of town, and some people would rather have a church across the street than they would a railroad station. We understand that. But, you know, we want what's best for Elk Grove, honestly. We want what's best for Elk Grove.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks.
Brenda, you're up, followed by Rebecca Deerson.
Hi, my name is Brenda Fow, and I did want to say thank you for valuing the public arts. I do appreciate that. It takes a cookie cutter town and makes it into a unique city. I like that.
Thank you.
I've lived in the Laguna Green area, which is directly across the street from the number two proposed area. We would be the closest development to that. And we've lived in that house since 1997, so long time owner. And just before I came to this meeting, I quickly asked surrounding, some surrounding neighbors, do you know anything about this? And they did not. That may be why the list under number two is so short and only has to do with the refuge, is because a lot of my neighbors didn't know. So I noticed the list of what has gone in where, and that's great, but they were unaware. So that may be why you may, you don't have as much input out of my area. Also, I have three different issues offhand, probably as many as was listed under, you know, the concerns of number one. But for the number two Franklin Elk Grove area, one of my biggest concerns is, that is a pathway, coming from, let's see, the Laguna Green area and the Lake Point area, all heading to Franklin and Toby, the kids. You've got biking, skateboarding, walking, heading over to Franklin and Toby Johnson. It's, you know, you get that traffic in the morning, and then you get them heading back. And so my concern is, you put a hub there, that's a lot of in-and-out traffic, you know, a lot of movement, a lot of concerns about, you know, who's there with all these kids passing by. You've also got them coming, and believe it or not, you'll see them trekking up the same direction, because a lot of the kids who are heading to, out near Elliott Ranch, that Stone Lake area, a lot of those kids, if they're biking, they'll come up that Elk Grove, go down Franklin, head up Whitelock too. So my concern is, you've got a lot of passing kids heading in those directions that would be right in front of where you're talking about putting this facility. Also, my concern over the Stone Lake Preserve too. And the reason is, is because being as I've lived here since 1997, I remember when there was nothing where it really exists. It was open field, and it was wildlife refuge. And then it was gobbled up with development. And now, they're talking about gobbling more up, and that's where I really get concerned about. It's this constant gobble, gobble, gobble. You're starting to really cut into the refuge. And the concern is, you know, of course, everything that's going to impact it from the traffic and all that, but you're taking up the land that was set aside to preserve. We bought our house, when we bought our house, we were excited, knowing that that was, you know, going to be preserved. And so it really is quite disheartening to see it being taken up by development. Oh, was that already three minutes? Oh my gosh. Okay, one of the things, just really quickly, the transportation I get concerned about also, that's a busy street with the turning there, especially coming down Elk Grove Boulevard, making a right onto Franklin Boulevard, lot of traffic. So I get concerned about the impact there. And one last thing, in my house, you already have the rail line here. And believe it or not, it shakes my house, and you know, you hear the noise. Now you're also talking about putting something transportation-related to the front of it. So basically, on two sides of this development, you're going to have transportation-related things. It's a lot to ask of a group of, you know, housing, to absorb not just one, but two noise and transportation-related areas, you know? You've got the rail line here, and then if you put a hub here, we're just kind of surrounded by all of that. So anyways, that was it. Sorry, went over by.
That's all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker, Rebecca.
Moved to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
Motion second, hold of the favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, done.
Bet you're high-fiving me, John.
I'm Rebecca Deerson, and thank you for letting me speak. I spoke on this a couple weeks ago. You were out of the country, and you were in Austin, I think, so.
I was here.
Yes, you were, so was Councilwoman Soon. So my concerns keep adding up for this site number one. It's disheartening that this initial screening is not posted on Elk Grove's website. It's been like this sort of piecemeal. After I talked the other, you know, a couple weeks ago, then this 26-page document suddenly appeared on the website. Prior to that, my public comments that I had put, I had addressed to Tom, Mr. Metcalf, weren't even there. So I have issues with site number one, because I live right next door to site number one. I would, Pastor Steve, prefer to see a church there, and I was excited whenever I knew Pastor Steve was going to have a church there. So to hear the stopping and starting, stopping and starting, that is directly next, they want a certain length of a platform. It's right next to the railroad crossing at Bilby right now. And Bilby is completely congested in the morning, when you have Franklin Elementary School kids going, as well as people going to work, heading out Hood Franklin Road. So I am concerned about the train stop, if it's every hour eventually, and you have that railroad crossing there, and you have kids that are going to school, you have people that are stuck at that railroad crossing, and then they're not, if they're not stuck there, they'll be stuck up at Whitelock and Franklin, which was redone a few years ago after a number of deaths at that railroad crossing. So that's a really big concern of mine. You know, I understand San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority has been really active in this, and it almost feels like this feasibility study has been really pushed by them, and the sites have been pushed on their, with their, you know, blessings, so to speak. This top site up here in Councilwoman Soon's district, I feel like that honestly, you have the most density of population in that area, but you have it in an industrialized area already. And I feel like, you know, just before I even saw this map, I brought that up two weeks ago, I'm like, why did that never even get considered? And now, all of a sudden, there's this map here today, whenever they're doing this presentation, that that was a site that was kind of, oh yeah, we've begun it, and now we're forgetting about it. Transparency.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see on the screen where you're pointing to. Which site were you referring to?
The site in the SAC sewer area. Yeah, I drove up and down that line, and I thought.
Mike, could you put that back up on the screen?
I thought, well, why is it that that site hasn't even been considered? And then now, that was one of the initial screenings, but the initial screening was never posted on the website. I didn't attend an open house. And on a feasibility study, or when you're trying to figure out where your community wants things to go, to have 175 comments on something, that you have 161,000 people in this. I was a project manager for a trails project in Lake County, a population of about 60,000 people. I had 150 people attend a workshop that I put on. So to say you had two workshops, or not workshops, open houses, because it's basically information they're providing, and not much input, it's already been rubber stamped. So I just, I feel like there needs to be some more community input. We never, people in my community don't know that this is going on, and we're directly affected by it. Thank you.
Rebecca, before you go, by the way, I've worked with Lake County, they're very active in Lake County.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I worked on the Canocti, I was a project manager for the Canocti Trails Project.
Okay.
So when they opened Mount Canocti for, for the first time, so people could walk up there, but.
I'm just curious, what media do you, platform do you think would be useful? Because we've tried to get the word out, we've, we put it on Facebook, we put it on our website, we've said it on Nextdoor, we've sent letters. So I'm curious, what media platform do you think would reach your residents?
Well, I think that a large part of this had to do with that you had summer break. I think that you need to hold some of your meetings on the weekends, because people just can't get here at 6:00 in the evening. I mean, I didn't get here till 7:00, because I had to have dinner. I had to pick up a Toby kid from stage crew and bring her, and get her home and have dinner. So it's difficult for people to get here in the evenings. But honestly, I, their smud is supposed to be doing a re, some sort of increase in their substation in this unincorporated town of Franklin, and not even in the city of Elk Grove. And I received a written notice from them, telling me about a community meeting. So it's a large capital project, and I believe that this large capital project, when you have areas that are being directly, my home value will be directly affected by this. Not only that, there will be increase in traffic, increase in congestion, everything. Parking, people will probably, because that's the smallest site, there's going to be the least amount of parking there, and people will be parking on my street. So honestly, everybody that is in the, within earshot of those should have been notified by mail that there was a community meeting that was going to happen, or a workshop of why they don't think that that area should be. I just think that social media is great, but there's a lot of people that still aren't on that. And then you have, you have, what, 20 different languages spoken in the schools? So you have, as first languages, of people that are in Elk Grove, and we talk about unity and humanity and everything. How are we even contacting those people, if everything is written in English, to, you know, these community members that don't even know about the project, because they speak Chinese, or they speak Hua, or, you know, and that's their first language, and they're not connected on Nextdoor, so.
You know, got some good points, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Deerson?
Mike.
It's nice to meet you. We spoke this morning, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mike, relative to the public outreach, what was the extent that was done for all these different sites?
As identified in the staff, in the staff report, also in the earlier presentation slide, we did conduct as much with the information that we had. We tried to reach out to the homeowners associations and neighborhood groups that we did have contact information for. It was very challenging to find specific contact information for the 30 different homeowners associations and neighborhood groups in our city, but we did reach out to as many as we could.
Was there any direct mailing?
No, there was no direct mailing.
And what, but this, this.
Newsletter, newsletter was the only one that I would consider direct mailing, considering it's distributed citywide.
Okay. Yes, I know, so the newsletter, social media, I'm sure it was in the Elk Grove Citizen.
I'd be happy to pass on what smud sent me, because I think I still have that, community meeting notification that they sent me whenever they're going.
Okay, thank you. If you could send us a copy of that, that'd be great.
Because you know, our district in Elliott East, there is a whole, that's what I think is.
Okay, our last speaker is, I'm going to probably butcher your name, is it, is it Lang?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor and the councilmembers, thanks for the opportunity for me to speak up. First, I have two questions. One is, has the Fresno line reached its full capacity? Second question is, since we have done the feasibility study, what percentage of population in Elk Grove will be using the heavy line, heavy rail, railway line? So these two questions basically were addressed. Do we actually need a heavy line to, or a train station to be put in Elk Grove? But let me take a step back. Let's say we do need this railway station or the train station. So since we have people strongly go for the site one, I would like to express my opinion. I strongly oppose site one. I think Rebecca has already given a lot of good reasons. The biggest reason I oppose it is because of the traffic. We have three major schools in that area, Franklin High, Toby Johnson, and Franklin Elementary School, which is on the other side of the railway. So we have two schools on this side, another school on the other side, and every day in the morning, people across the railway go to the other side to send their kids to the elementary school. So with that, and also, we're including the people going to, towards the Sacramento, and going to, going, get onto the highway, go to the Highway 5, go to the Stockton, the traffic will be incredibly bad. Second, there is a community park right across the street of the future, the train station. So again, I do have some safety concerns on this part. In addition to that, I think the site one is fairly small. I think putting a multimodal center to Elk Grove is a very ambitious move, which I think is a great idea, but since that site is very small, it is very limited for future development. It is very difficult to expand in the future. I don't think this will serve a good purpose in the long run. Okay, now, to address some of the questions, one is regarding the community outreach, we do not have a HOA or homeowner association in a large area in that Toby Johnson and Franklin High area. So most of the people will not get the notice on time. I actually got the notice from the Nextdoor, okay, which have about 500, 600 peoples on it, but that's about it. And also, I would like to comment on one of the, I think it's saying, or I can say saying, about the future of the Elk Grove. If we position Elk Grove as a commuter town for the Bay Area, can I, just, just one second, I don't think this will be a very feasible approach, because along the way, we will face fierce competition from all these little towns. Because along the way, we will face fierce competition from all these little towns along this heavy rail, including Stockton, Lodi, Gout, Tracy, Ripon, Modesto, all of these. I don't think we can win out. I think the best way in my vision to position the Elk Grove is a commuter town for our great capital Sacramento, or the other greater Sacramento area. But that's my comment. Thank you very much for letting me, letting me speak out.
Thank you, thank you very much. So we have one add-on speaker, Randy Becker. Three-time charge charm tonight?
It kind of goes to where I started when I first talked to you. You know, we ended up with all of this because of what other people have done in those chairs and before. You know, to impact a, a community and not look outside. I'm really disturbed at the map. It hides what things should be not hidden, houses. But I'm really disturbed that Cameron Road isn't all the way through. We've got things in progress in some form, but they're not on this map. And so have we looked outside to Cameron Road that isn't affecting the houses that are currently built? I mean, we need to think out of the box, because these homes were built first. And now we're trying to build a city around the homes. And that's unfair to these people. You know, I live on the other side of 99, in the, in the town of Elk Grove, the original town, not the city. So anything built around there has already been built for many years. But these people bought homes in the, in the 90s, 2000, now 2017? That's not fair to them. If we're going to build this city, then they need to have a voice at the table. They really do. And I think that's up to you guys to give them that voice.
I agree. Well said, Randy.
Thank you.
So Randy's our last speaker. So we'll close public comment and go to council deliberation.
Vice Mayor, I have a question for Mike. I wanted to, we talked a little bit about this, Mike, but I just wanted to maybe repeat or just confirm. So in this grant process, we, they want a site, so in order to be most competitive for this grant, right? So are we then, I mean, do we have any flexibility after that, if the grant is awarded?
The grant is essentially being applied for by the JPA agency. They have discretion to choose a site outside of the city limits. I know that one of the things that they want to do is collaborate with the city of Elk Grove to locate a potential option that's either within our city limits or immediately adjacent to. What this study looked at was that consideration, as well as what do we have, excuse me, currently within our city's jurisdiction and our authority to potentially look at to develop. Now, if it's outside of the city limits, could be annexed, that's a possibility. But what immediately would we have essentially to develop? And this is a very high-level study. If we were to actually select a site, further study would be needed on that site to look at things like crime, nuisances, site design, and environmental issues.
Yeah. So that's when a lot Rebecca and others would see, they would get the notification, because it'd be part of the CEQA process.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can you clarify that? So that's when the community members would get the notice again? Is, is that what I just heard, once the feasibility study is completed? And then the community then would be informed? Would that be a little too late, I guess? My question is, what I've heard a collective voice here tonight was that there wasn't enough community outreach for many of the folks to be able to attend and give their comments. And I guess, you know, I, I take that road. I drop my daughter off at Franklin Elementary every morning, and so I get stuck in that traffic. So I do understand, I do, I do know that traffic and that holds up very well. And I feel like there wasn't enough outreach for the community, for them to attend and to be educated on it and to hear their concerns. And I guess my question is, would the council be open to maybe holding one more community input meeting?
Well, I'm, I have no problem with doing additional meetings, but I think part of what, the goal on this was basically a citywide view. There was no individual neighborhood. So it was more of a, lack of better words, a generic approach to go, look, we're going to do all the normal forms of mass introduction, newsletter, newspaper. And so then, now that the sites are getting narrowed down, once the council makes a decision on where the interest is, then it'll come down to bringing in, I don't know, 1,000-foot radius. I don't know what the radius would be where you'd actually have a direct mail. So I think to answer Rebecca's comment, smud's actually doing a specific project at a specific location. So that's why they're doing their public outreach, which we do do. It's required, I believe, by CEQA. If you're going to be able to do projects, you're going to have to do distribution. And it varies depending on the project. Some are 500 feet, some are 1,000 feet, some probably more. There's a, there's a whole template of what's required on that. First of all, to answer what both Rebecca, Lang, and Randy said, I really dislike going in and disrupting somebody's life when they chose a property for a particular reason. And they did all their due diligence, looked at everything, say, hey, this is great. I'm not going to have to worry about that, especially when it's either a wetland or a preserve. And then all of a sudden, you go, eh, we're going to see if we can swap some property around here. So I don't really support either of these. I would look to, I would like to look at an option. And again, it's really difficult looking at this to see down at a fine level what the impacts would be. I know it's a citywide view that you're providing us, but if you're going to get down to individual sites, we need, we need to have a very detailed scope of that site so we can make a better determination. I'd like to see if we can look at some of the other sites along there as, as more viable options myself.
So Vice Mayor, I, before I chime in on that part, the reason for my question was that I believe they're up against the clock for the grant application. And that to make a competitive grant application, specifying a site that is mostly void of, of challenges will give them the best opportunity to compete for that grant. And then it is up to the JPA to construct, is what I heard, Mike. Therefore, they may have the flexibility to switch at that point. So the, what, what, what I'm understanding is if we can give them a, a site to choose for the grant application, we can go through the process that you're, you and Councilman Wen are referring to and engage more on where.
Pull the map back up.
Where to appropriately put it. Councilman, you might, I know you've been involved in this in a while. And I heard you say earlier, you guys have looked at all these sites too, but.
So, thank you for that lead-in, Councilmember Soon, because I, that's, essentially what I was going to say is, Vice Mayor, you name a site and I'll tell you what's wrong with it. And that includes the sites that are still being considered.
So what was the biggest obstacle with, I heard with Site 5?
Regional sanitation said, no way. We will not allow you, you cannot buy our buffer lands.
Okay. Why, I don't know what other properties are along that route that would be less impacted.
There are none.
We're, we're part of that board, though.
Huh?
Sorry, regional sand.
Yeah.
So we can't get board support? We're on that board, I mean.
We are on that board.
I know, I know we're only two votes, but, okay, okay.
And what is their objection to it?
It's multiple, actually. The first and foremost is that that's part of the buffer lands area surrounding the sewer treatment plant. And so they don't want any encroachment coming toward their sewer treatment plant for a number of reasons. One, because of the conservation that they've set up in order to, to have their permit be allowed by the state. But also because with the treatment of the effluent, there's a lot of chemicals and a lot of different processes that are used that could create a potentially hazardous situation. So they don't want any encroachment of human activity nearer to their plant, thereby increasing their liability. And then also that particular spot there. Oh, you're taxing my brain, but it's one of the ranches that, just recently, that we've decided, we voted to convert it into, there's a farmhouse that would be opened up for like an interpretive study to explain the importance of the buffer lands and the wildlife that's there. And so, I mean, yeah, you could try and drum up political support, but to Darren's point, it's the mayor and myself against a board of, you know, another 16 or so members.
Yeah. But, but, I mean, having said that, you know, when, when we went to Denver and we looked at a multimodal station there, which they, they did it right. And I, what I mean by that is, you know, not only do you have different modes of transportation all coming into there, but you, you had, you had roads surrounding it, you had buses coming in, you have the train, but you didn't have the noise pollution that you guys, that I heard earlier. People got in and out really easily. There was not the congestion that, that, that you would think of. But it was done right. And it also had a lot of housing around it as well. And so. Both. I mean, there's, some was redeveloped and then some, some things were there. Things are, cranes are in the sky right now. So I just, you know, I don't, and again, we're talking, there's, to me, it sounds like there's a difference. There's two decisions here. One, a site that they could use to apply for their grant. And then one, I mean, we could have a more robust conversation about the actual site we would want, if, if we receive the funding. So I look at 5 because it's such, I mean, there's, there's more property there. And I see homes right adjacent to it. So, I don't know, I mean, there'd be more conversations to have with the county, obviously, but it just. Well, we're providing direction for a site that they could include in the grant application, but it.
And giving direction. My understanding is we're providing direction to continue with the feasibility study. We're not identifying any particular site.
That's correct.
So it says, provide direction, Mike, and you, I heard you need a direction for the JPA's grant application. Did I misunderstand?
The ultimate direction essentially that we would need from council is if they were interested in us exploring either more outreach, potentially looking at other sites, potentially looking at focusing on one rail corridor. I mean, it's a slew of direction. We did acknowledge the public comments that we received, again, following the open, second open house. And that's why staff did not provide a recommended action tonight. It allowed the public to provide comment, as well as allowed the council to deliberate and discuss the issues for all of the sites that staff has looked at thus far.
Okay, well then.
Yeah, so it was basically to receive the report.
Yeah.
And then say, basically, continue, or, I mean, theoretically, we could say we're done.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm adding to that conversation is that if a passenger rail station is an improvement you'd like to see in Elk Grove, Site 1 or 2, is pretty much what it comes down to. One is the path of least resistance. Two, probably has a little more flexibility, but it has the hurdle of being within the wildlife refuge. Now, that's, that's all a negotiation. If we did a two-for-one, give them two acres for every one acre we impacted, three-for-one, whatever. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You could strike a deal, there, provide for better circulation on site. So 4 is a non-starter, because you can't even build a temporary station there. You know, let's say that the decision to move service is delayed for five years. You'd still be looking at about a $10 million investment for something you're essentially going to throw away. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And so then again, it comes down to whether you want a light rail connection or a heavy rail connection. Or at least a transit connection or a.
Honestly, I think you need, I think you need both for two different purposes. But the 9, 9 is it solely because it's out, I mean, it's the same as 5.
9, you have all sorts of problems. One, it's in the unincorporated area. Two, it's not served by any major roadway right now. Cameron Road, the earliest it would be under construction would be in 2019, more likely 2020.
Yeah.
And so from the purposes of the grant application, that, that site's a non-starter.
Oh, okay, that's why.
Hey, go ahead, come on up, Lang. This is an important issue, especially since you're personally impacted.
Well, actually, I'm not as impacted as Rebecca, I think. But I do have my opinion on this, because I do have my own opinion about the future of the Elk Grove. So I think all these discussions go down to my first two questions. So what exactly do feasibility predict the percentage of population, population is going to use the heavy rail? I just didn't get this quite clear. What percentage? I mean, we have all these discussions. We build the railway station in Elk Grove. And what, how many, what percentage of population is going to be impacted? Well, well, some people say, I will use it. But if you use it once a year, that does not justify to put a railway station into the Site 1 or Site 2. I just didn't get this picture clear.
So both, both the, any of these sites, the potential would be mostly for commuting. Yeah, there'd be some people that would use it for transit to the airport potentially. Those would be the once-a-year, twice-a-year type items. But the mass use would be able to, people to be able to commute. And you expand the opportunity, all, as it was mentioned, all the way up north to all the way down south.
So in the feasibility study, sorry, go ahead.
And west.
Apologize, okay. So in the feasibility study, we don't have this type of research have been done. So basically, we just predict, we're going to build a railway station, we're going to attract the people coming from Bay Area. But like I said, I, I predict the Elk Grove most likely will be a commuter town or maybe a town adjacent to the capital. I don't envision a lot of people coming to Elk Grove and then work. Well, of course, we have some people or some residents will do this. But again, along the, if this is the future of the Elk Grove, but I think we will face a lot of competition with many, I actually work in Stockton. So I live in Elk Grove. So I know how many competition will be if we put Elk Grove into this direction. That doesn't, doesn't sound to me, logistically, makes sense. People all go, skip to Stockton, Lodi, Gout, Ripon, Modesto, and go into Elk Grove. But for Sacramento people coming to Elk Grove make perfect sense. But for Sacramento commute, do we need the heavy railway in Elk Grove? So that's my, just my question.
Yeah, so I, I would say, you know, I, I could see where that perspective looking at today is a static environment, right? But, you know, did you envision this area 30 years ago that we would have 170,000 people? Before you, before you answer it, I'm asking rhetorically. So we also estimate, and you asked for percentages. And so these, there are projections. I don't know if we have projections for usage of transit or, or a heavy rail. But CECO, we have projections of 600,000 more people coming into the area by, I think it's 2036. So where are they going to go? Who knows? If we get our employment center going in Cameron Road, we hopefully can balance some of that out. So all I can tell you is I believe being connected to the region and improving mobility within our city is, is vital to our quality of life and economic development. So if we want to just not, I mean, equivalently, equivalently, we would say, hey, don't put that freeway exit through here, is what you're saying, when it pertains to the heavy rail. And I, I understand your perceptions, you don't use it. You know, I don't use it today either, but who knows 30 years from now what happens and how things develop. But to bypass that opportunity, because as Randy mentioned earlier, the costs never go down. I remember back in the year, I think it was 2000, when I was going around and, and looking, visiting, or participating in community meetings, when, when extension of light rail at that time. Light rail was 11 million a mile back then. And now it's approximately 44 million a mile. a mile. So...
It's north of 70 million.
North of 70 now, okay, thank you. So my, things never go down, right? So if you make the decision today, you don't want to be a part of it. And I think, you know, South Bay Area and San Jose is lamenting not being part of Bart now too, because whoever's driving on 680, I think, is, is lamenting that decision as well.
No, no, first, I do want to be part of...
I gave you a courtesy to give you a few extra minutes. We're, we're going to have to move on, I'm sorry.
I do want to be a part of the Elk Grove, otherwise I won't be here today, so I just let you know this.
Thank you very much.
The second is, the reason I brought up this is we have two train stations in Sacramento and Stockton. Stockton on Highway Five is about 30 minutes. So that's, if you look at the map, that's, that's always been my question, do we need another train station in between of Sacramento and Stockton? But thank you very much for giving me the time, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Okay. Now, we, no, we have to move on, I'm sorry. Public, I, I gave them a courtesy, public comments already closed, but I...
I'm trying to make sure that I know we have deadlines here regarding the church and regarding the grant, and just to not rush the planning. I don't want to end up...
We, we want, this is, this is just a feasibility at this point, absolutely. We'll, we'll do public outreach as extensively when we, if we move forward on any parts of this. So...
So I, I don't even, then we're not, we're just receiving file.
So do you have enough to go on? I mean, you, you kind of get an idea we're, we're not totally, uh...
We need more outreach. That's, I think that's what, what we need.
I, I think specifically on the sites that have been identified, we could do a better job of public outreach that we can do in conjunction with moving this forward tonight. Continue with the study and we'll just have to...
Vice Mayor, so could, let me see if I can paraphrase. So I think there's consensus to look at the West Side Line, to understand that the East Side Line is essentially out.
No, it sounds like the East Side Line's out.
Okay. So to concentrate and find, find a location, do some additional outreach, gather some more information, and concentrate on the West Line. The Site Number Three is still a viable option. One doesn't discount three, you can have both. One serves light rail, one serves heavy rail.
I, I would advocate for three also, yes.
So we're, you know, one, one or two doesn't, you know, so three's still viable, both can go at the same, both can go into the future, right? So staff will go back, take a look at the West Side Line, see what we can identify, do some additional outreach, and come back to the council.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and just real quick to put a bow on this, I wish there were more options, and like I say, I've scoured every site I could along that West Side Line, and this is what it comes down to.
I wish you were a better salesman.
But, uh, but...
Why is Site Number Nine not even being considered? Because, I mean, we've been talking about...
So Rebecca, I already, I already went over that. It's, it's out in the unincorporated county, it has no access roads to it, and would not be developable within the timeframe of the grant from the federal government. The, the other thing to, to keep in mind, having just been in Boston, is their train network is unbelievable, and there are million-dollar houses that literally front...
Oh, yeah.
The train tracks.
Denver too, yeah.
Yeah, so...
I know. There's perceptions that I think we need to, you know, as we do outreach, I think we need to get a lot of that out there.
All right, let's go to the next item.
Next item is 10.4, which is to receive information, provide direction on Elk Grove Municipal Code, Updates and Amendments, Regulating Smoking.
Mary, it's going to take about 20 minutes, I'll get this figured out. There we go. Hi, I'm your city attorney, John Homs, and thanks for staying up late and talk about smoking for about the next 20, 30 minutes. Maybe five.
Maybe when you start smoking, huh?
Maybe three.
Maybe three.
Three.
I'm not going to let you wave the presentation, not after all that. So, real quickly, I'm remembering this back because council directed that we take a look at what we can do in the city with respect to further smoking regulations. State law right now has pretty good regulations. Under state law, there can be no smoking in any place of employment. That by statute relieves cities from further regulation in that area, covers a lot of ground. Cities can further regulate if they so choose, consistent with state law, and that, CSDs also can regulate, public agencies generally can. So the Elk Grove Municipal Code, along with the Consumer Necessity CSD Code, end up outlawing smoking in a lot of places in the city. There's no smoking of tobacco or other substances, it's not just tobacco, in any public place where the owner or manager prohibits smoking. Restaurants, outdoor restaurants, things like that. Also within 300 feet of a school, daycare facility, amusement park, that sort of thing, is, smoking is prohibited, as well as in the park itself or in a trail. Under the city's code, a distribution of tobacco products to any person under the age of 18 is prohibited. Last year, we had Senate Bill Seven, which changed the law a little bit. It set the new legal age for acquisition of tobacco and distribution of tobacco at 21. That applies to cities, including ourselves, of course, as a more restrictive state law. The one exception, which is somewhat interesting, is if you are active military, the smoking age is still 18. So the recommendation is actually pretty straightforward here for the council to consider is to revise the city's code to align with state law, change the tobacco acquisition age to 21. We'd leave it for 18 for active military. One of the things that we can consider is prohibiting smoking at outdoor dining establishments. Right now, as I mentioned, it's up to the owners or managers of those facilities. As I go around town for lunches, meals, whatever, I don't tend to see smoking in those facilities anyways. But if the city council wants to take the further step and prohibit smoking in those facilities, since that seems to be the trend anyways, you could do that. That would be a further restriction. And then provide whatever direction you think is appropriate. Once you do that, we'll bring back an ordinance for consideration, and unless you need a smoke break, we're ready for comments and questions.
I, I have a question. How do you have an outdoor dining that's within 20 feet of an open, the doors? And that's a violation right there.
Well, you, that's right. Well, for public buildings, it's 20 feet. With the private buildings, you could conceivably allow smoking in those areas. But if you have a larger area, I mean, for instance, I went to Jack's at lunch today, I think you might be 20 feet away at some of the farther tables, but you're right, it's going to be kind of a stretch. Most of the outdoor dining areas in the town, they either don't allow it or it's just kind of not done anyways. So I'm not sure you really have a problem there. The only suggestion, if you wanted to firm that up, is to expressly codify that as prohibited. You may have seen, there was a comment, a written comment from a gentleman who was against this. There was a place in town, he didn't say where, where he enjoys going and having beer and pizza and a smoke every now and again, and he didn't want to have further regulations. He didn't say where it was, so I don't know where it is. So there's at least one member of the community who doesn't want to have those further restrictions, I guess out of personal liberty concerns. But as I said, going around town, and you all have had experiences as well, I don't really see this as being a major issue. The owners and the managers tend to take care of it on their own. But like I said, if you want to take a little further step and prohibit it expressly, this is an opportunity that we saw that you might be able to do that.
And if we did prohibit the smoking in the dining areas, we could put in ordinance, the ordinance that they, there is the ability to smoke within X amount of feet outside.
You could put a, sure, you could put a restriction on there. Now, one of the things I might suggest, if that's what you want to do, is you'd say that there's, there's no smoking allowed in the designated smoking area, but then you could put a restriction on there, you know, 20 feet away, as Vice Mayor Detrick mentioned, and that's generally consistent with state law and other contexts. So the people do have a place, if they choose to smoke a cigarette or a cigar or whatever, they could maybe just step around the corner, and the smoke wouldn't bother other people while they're eating.
So, you know, I will say, as somebody that frequently eats out in our city and likes to dine outside with my young children, I have had folks who would feel that it was appropriate to bust out a cigarette and smoke while my small children are sitting there. And so we'd have to get up and leave, and, and I'm not the only one, I've seen other family members do that too. And I know our city is fully impacted with families and young people wanting to start their family here, and I, I do see that as an issue, where if they're outside dining and families want us to sit outside and somebody smokes, that we have to get up and move somewhere else. And we don't see it often, but it does happen. So I, you know, I would be for restricting it, but giving them a leeway to smoke within 20 feet from the dining area or whatnot.
Well, he didn't say 20 feet from the dining area, right?
Well, that's the suggestion.
Okay, that's a suggestion.
Would you 20 feet from the dining area? Right now, that's not current city law, but that would be the suggestion. So you create a little bit, bigger buffer there.
Any other comments?
Well, I'm just curious, have we, we heard anything from any of the restaurant associations about...
Not heard anything.
And, and then, right now, it's, the, the restaurant owner would enforce now, who would enforce even if we expressly prohibit?
So the way it works right now is if the restaurant owner, business owner decides to prohibit it, then the city has the right, not the obligation, to enforce it. And so if someone is violating that, it'd be a violation of the code, it's subject to citation. So it'd be similar if the city decided to just mandate that those areas are non-smoking. The city would still be enforcement agency, be subject to citation, and potentially penalties and fines. So the owner can also enforce those things on private property, of course. It, you don't want to have a, a private owner enforcing city codes and causing some sort of a, you know, altercation while they have an issue like this. So the city would remain the enforcement agency really under any scenario.
So in this scenario, councilman, when you're sitting there having lunch or breakfast, and you would have, she would have to call the police department and...
Well, I probably wouldn't go that far. I mean, I'd probably, I mean, I'd be reasonable about it. I'd probably start with the...
Or shame, code enforcement.
I mean, we're not going to break out the SWAT team for this, but I think...
I'm just kidding, how does this...
But I think what you'd probably do, what I would do in a situation like that, is just contact the manager and say, look, this gentleman is smoking next to me, you know, see if you can resolve it peacefully and informally there. And I would wager that most of the time, that's going to resolve the issue. If there's an altercation or, you know, a threat or something like that, then obviously I would encourage someone to contact the police.
So I guess, as I'm trying to reconcile, then how, if that, isn't that how it would work now?
That is how it would work now.
That is correct, yes.
The, the only distinction is that it's up to the property owner to decide. So if I were running a restaurant, I had an outdoor dining area, and I wanted to allow smoking out there, I could do that.
Oh, I see.
Under the proposal, they would be prohibited citywide.
Yeah.
So right now, so the distinction really, councilmember soon, is whether or not you want to decide as a matter of policy for the city to prohibit it, or do you want to leave that decision to the property owner? That's really the decision point.
Yeah, okay.
The enforcement remains essentially the same.
Okay. Councilman, you haven't, you think you would have issues, I mean, if you ask the restaurant owner, would they comply and ask those people to stop, or...
So I've had that happen before, where I've had kids there, and they just don't know, and they'll bust out a cigarette, and I'd let the restaurant owner know, and they'll politely let him know this is a no-smoking dining area. And they would say, okay, sorry, and they put it out. I've never had anybody have an issue, that, but, you know, that's not happened here in the city where I...
Yeah.
Because that's not, that's not something we've put on yet. Right now, they're allowed to smoke.
So then where you're saying that's happened, they did have an ordinance in place?
Right.
That disallowed it?
Right.
Oh, that disallowed it, okay.
So as Mr. Habez said, this is a trend that most cities are taking, where they're, they're not allowing smoking in the dining area. Rancho Cordova, Folsom...
Many cities in the area are going in that direction, including Rancho Cordova and Folsom.
Yeah. I was just thinking if we were able to achieve the same thing without the additional legislation, I guess, or law, but...
Yeah, I mean, like, like I said, it's, it's really an issue as to whether or not you want to have it as a matter of city code, city policy, or leave it to the property owner. That's really what this seems to come down to in my mind.
Yeah.
Councilman Hume, did you want to pipe in? I thought I saw you, oh, I just saw you piping in. I have no problem with a stricter, stricter ordinance myself. I mean, I'm...
Yeah, I, I would, I would choose the, the children over a person, you know, person smoking.
Well, I think it's, I choose everybody's health over none of them.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just using Councilman Wynn's example.
So before you give, I don't know if you have public comment, any speakers on this one, but before you give direction?
No, there's no public direction.
No?
No.
You might want to open it, just in case.
We can open public comment, close public comment, and go to council deliberation.
All right, I'm going to sit down, you give me whatever direction you like.
I, I think we gave it to you.
You want to do the ordinance?
Do we need to vote on it?
No, direction's good enough.
Councilman, you wanted to say something?
Well, I was just going to throw in there, I, I appreciate John's point that it's largely an economic decision of, do you want to regulate the business practice of a, of an eatery? But, you know, it is kind of the trend around the, not just our region, but statewide. And, you know, I think for the people who want to enjoy eating outside without that nuisance, they ought to be able to.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Bring back an ordinance, thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Take us to item 10.5, which is to consider resolution approving a park improvement agreement, subdivision improvement agreements, and the small lot final maps for Phase 1A and Phase 1B of the Sterling Meadows Large Lot, Phase 2 subdivision.
I'll move to continue this item. Just kidding, I'm kidding.
I, I was kidding, I was kidding, going to do the same thing, just as...
Evening, Vice Mayor, House of Members.
Majority. I'm kidding. What, we got a first and a second? Just kidding.
It's been a long evening, so I'll try to keep this short. In fact, the staff report...
Billable hours, though.
...speaks for itself. You can always wave the presentation, but I'm prepared to go real quickly through it.
I just want to recognize our former public works director, Richard Shepherd, has come back to visit us. It's good to see you again.
Pleasure to be at the podium again, thank you.
So, you guys want the presentation, or do you want to wave it?
I think...
I think we've all been fairly well briefed on it, if there's any public comment or...
I know I have, but, just, I mean...
Let me skip right to the...
I think we're public quickly, yeah.
...meat of it real quickly, because there's some areas that I think we want to get your, your buy-in to. First of all, the background of it real quick, the 2008, the Sterling Meadows Tenanted Map and associated development agreement was approved. It constitutes about 200 acres, 984 single-family residential units, 200 multifamily units, about 14 acres of one park and another, five-acre park and a variety of other amenities. The DA that was attached to this entitlement was written for a 10-year term, and it is planned to be expired July 11th, 2018, nine months out from now. First large lot map was approved in 2014, and it consisted of three lots. The second large lot map was approved in 2015, and that had 14 lots. That was the northern part of that tenanted map. So we're here this evening to talk about the first small lot final maps that are being submitted for approval, and they are Phases 1A and 1B of the formerly large lot Phase 2. So that's this upper northern part, and this is the Phase 1A lot map, and that map represents about eight and a half acres, 51 single-family units, three landscape lots. Phase 1B is right next door, that covers approximately 15 acres, has 78 single-family units, and four landscape lots. So there's some features in the development agreement, as, as we're going to talk a little bit more in a little bit, but the entitlements of the Sterling Meadows subdivision are governed by this DA. And why that is important is the DA was a 10-year term, and it is set to expire July 11th, 2018, and again, that's only nine months from now. So any entitlements that are not perfected by that date will expire with the DA. And while the DA is very comprehensive, there's three specific areas of the DA that we'd like to point out because of the method that is being utilized to satisfy these requirements on these particular maps. One is a park agreement, and that's being developed to assure the delivery of the first park as it's identified in the DA. The other is the type of security that's used on these maps, and the third is, are the subdivision improvement agreements, which secure all the other public improvements. First of all, this park agreement. Again, if you look at the Phase 1A and Phase 1B maps, the DA identifies what's called the first park, and this first park is approximately 14 acres, and it's to be built and completed before the 401st building permit. And why is that important? Well, there's, currently, the maps under review for the remaining Phase 2 area would exceed these 401 permit trigger. But the park is unlikely to be built before the DA expires. So what that means is we might have entitled maps that are worth more than 401 permits, have entitled maps that are worth more than 401 permits, but not have a trigger anymore to invoke the, to invoke the clause within the DA to assure that the park is delivered. So, that creates a problem to make sure that we can actually get the park delivered. We don't want to have a bunch of homes up there without a park to be able to go to. So, to provide the additional assurances that the first park could be constructed, the developers agreed to the following park provisions. One, the first park, should it not be completed by August 31, 2018, the applicant will provide the city a cash deposit, which is equal to what it would take to finish that park. That would be a city-defined amount, based on how much work has been done and how much work needs to be completed. In addition, provide additional protections. The city won't issue any building permits beyond 241 building permits until that first park is constructed. So, in essence, no more homes will be able to be sold, or lots sold, until the park is finished above 241.
Richard, does there need to be a distinction between constructed and completed?
Yes, that's hard to, redefine what is completed, between us and the CSD.
But, as far as the wording used, constructed, does that cover that it's completed?
Probably, this slide's not the, the language written in the agreement, but I believe the terms written in the agreement are completed, and that the city has sole discretion over deciding when it's completed.
Vice Mayor Detrick, I just looked up. It says, "Developers shall complete construction." So, it has both terms.
Okay.
They seem to be used synonymously.
Perfect. Thank you. So, another concern that staff has, and while we think that the park agreement will satisfy some of the concerns that we had for assuring that the park would be delivered, is the form of security being used. Because the DA, language in the DA, and this is quoted here, is that the form of security must come in the form of cash, a letter of credit, or other security satisfactory to the city. And I want to emphasize this again. Cash or letter of credit are explicitly identified as instruments to secure the improvements. Anything else is subject to, has to be satisfactory to the city. So, other than the cash provision that we talked about in the park agreement, which provides us assurance that the park would be delivered, and we think that's important, because, again, if you don't have cash on hand, it's kind of hard to call a bond at times, and since it's pretty clear that they won't be able to build, complete the park, complete construction of the park by the July 18th or July 11th date, where the DA would expire, we thought it was really good to have cash on hand at that point in time, rather than rely on bonds. So, but yet, because of that, we're hoping that bonds, while they're considered a typical security for most types of public improvements, we're wondering if council would also concur with that.
And then the last thing is... Cash is better.
Cash is always good. So, while the other issues associated to this, these maps are the subdivision improvement agreements, and these things are typically used to secure all the other public improvements, to make sure that they'll be constructed in an orderly and timely manner. And typically, all those improvements are defined in this SIA, and again, because security is normally posted for those. And typically, on projects that aren't bound by a DA requirement, we would allow bonds, again, on these types of security postings. And we also typically provide a 24-month duration on our subdivision improvement agreements. This gets a little sticky, again, because 24 months from now is well beyond the DA expiration. So, it would extend, the term of the 24 months is good, because it'll bind the developer to the, beyond the terminus of the development agreement, and again, give us assurance that the improvements will be built. But, the bonding of it, again, is associated to this concern of going beyond that expiration date. So, the actions we're asking you to consider before you approve these maps are, is the park agreement acceptable to meet the delivery requirements of the DA? And are bonds an acceptable form of security? And is the 24-month duration of the SIA is also acceptable? That's about it, Al.
So, Richard, I have a question that would be for the owners, and I know this has nothing to do with what they're asking tonight. We've been, we've asked many times about the south portion of the property, the feasibility of that going back to either commercial or office. Is there, would there be any possibility that you would look at doing that?
It's not a feasible ask? It's a feasible ask?
It's not something we can, it's not feasible. The 30 acres that were requested, it takes about 200, 200 lots off the large lot map, and, or something, that will have no value for what we take as 20-plus years.
Okay. Had to ask. Is any other questions for Richard?
Well, I guess, I'll just, I'm gonna, I could tee off your question. You said it was 200 lots off the...
You want him to come up?
Yeah, I think it'd be...
Can we have a representative come up, please?
Why don't you go and open public comment, because essentially what we're doing...
Open public comment. There, nobody signed up, but we'll go ahead and consider you signed up. Thank you, John.
I'm Derek Spalding with the developer, VTL Sterling Meadows.
Hi, Derek. So, I was just, just following up on Vice Mayor's question, is, just trying to think aloud here, 200 lots, if those lots were a different land plan or density, is that something you guys be amenable to?
Not at this time, no. You know, we purchased this land three years ago with this tenant map, with these entitlements, and we've now actually engineered all the lots, and the last group of lots will be submitted for improvement plan check before the end of the month. So, you know, we're gearing towards recording all these final maps prior to the expiration of the development agreement. And related to the concern of the staff regarding the expiration of the DA, you know, when a final map records, you know, the conditions of approval still apply to anything that's related to a building permit or occupancy of homes. They are, we have the same conditions of approval related to the improvements of the parks by the 401st building permit for this first park. So, that would still be in place. That doesn't go away when the DA expires. So, the, if we have all lots final-mapped, small lot maps, small lot final maps recorded, the conditions of approval still apply to those building permit requirements and occupancy requirements and the conditions of approval. So, it's not like there aren't any more, you know, triggers that the city has, so...
Councilman Hume? That being the case, you're not disputing the slide that you agreed to the changes?
Yeah, we've agreed to the changes for the park agreement to expedite this process.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll close, no other speakers, and we'll go to closed public comment and council deliberation. Councilman Hume?
So, if I remember correctly, there were three questions. Is the revised park agreement acceptable? Is the bonds acceptable for this go-around, and what kind of form of security in the future?
Right.
Okay.
And the 24-month duration of the SIA, I mean, subdivision improvement agreement. Personally, I don't think we have a problem with that. We just want to bring it to your attention.
Okay. And so, I guess one and three, I don't have a problem with. On two, I would say they're acceptable in this go-around, simply because we're kind of at the 11th hour. But, on the next set of final maps, I think we need to look at something a little more fungible.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I had concerns even with this one a little bit, just because bonds, it's a pain in the butt to get back bonds. But, if I'm okay, I'd be acceptable to letting this one go this time, and the next one will be a higher form of security.
Understood.
So, on the next maps coming forward, we'd look for additional forms of security rather than just bonds.
Yes. And perhaps just subdivision improvement.
Yeah, we have some maps under review right now, that I think we're trying to tee them up for next council meeting.
Talking about the ones that are ready, all ready to go for the next meeting, you're talking about the ones that they're just gonna be submitting for in, by the end of the month, that are gonna be coming probably to you next year.
The next, the ones that'll be coming next year?
We have three more final maps coming.
For this one.
So, you're saying anything in 2018?
Yeah. Those next three are for the first 241, right?
Right. Okay. So, anything this year is, this method of security is still okay? Anything 2018 would be a little higher form of security, because the DA is running out? Okay?
So, we have a motion on this?
Yes, we have a resolution.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt the resolution, approving the park improvement agreement subdivision.
Move to adopt the resolution.
And do we need to amend that to the comments that were made?
With the amendments...
A higher form of security for...
Yeah, that doesn't need to be part of the resolution. That's just direction. We got that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed or abstentions? 4-0. Adhere.